Good evening and welcome to the October 5th, 2023 meeting of the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals. First item on the agenda this evening is executive session. As Chair, I'm making a preliminary determination of the need of executive session pursuant to Generalist Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to conduct a meeting with Town Council relating to appeal of number 9221-113 Lakeview Avenue, Falmouth concerning pickleball. Is there a motion to go into executive session and to come back into open session afterwards?
So moved.
Give that to Suzanne. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, roll call, vote.
Fenneran, aye.
Morse, aye.
Murphy, aye.
Peterson, aye.
We are in executive session.
Mark, aye.
Welcome back to the October 5th, 2023 meeting of the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals. We have already opened. Our first item up on the agenda this evening was a 6:00 executive session, which we concluded. The next item on our agenda is public comment. This public comment is for anything that is not specifically on tonight's agenda. Is there any member of the public who would like to comment on anything not specifically on tonight's agenda? I believe copies of the agenda are by the door if anyone needs a copy. Seeing none. We have one continuation and four new hearings this evening pursuant to our policies. The Board reserves the right by vote to take things out of order. I'm going to make a motion that we take up new hearings first before the continuation. Is there a second? Second by Scott. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. First up then will be 07423 Rocha Lerner, trustees 55 Baywater Court, Falmouth, requesting a special permit to construct a half-story addition, increasing lot coverage by structures. Mr. Duffy, I believe you want to recuse yourself at this time?
Yes.
For the applicant before we open, both of our alternates this evening are not here due to personal reasons. The Board has four voting members. Do you want to proceed with four or would you like a continuation?
Procedurally, if we did have to have a continuance, one of the alternate members would be able to use the Mullen rule, right?
Correct.
To read in. So, you know, as long as there's a fair chance for continuation, if need be, I'd be comfortable moving forward tonight.
Very well. We open them.
All right. We have the case of Patricia Rocha, if I'm saying it correct, and James Lerner, trustees of 5 Carriage Lane, Canton, Mass., apply to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Sections 240, 102A, and 240, 11, 3A, 4 (the Code of Falmouth), to construct a half-story addition, increase lot coverage by structures on subject property known as 55 Baywater Court. And from town boards, I have, let's see, Water Department, no comment, Planning, no comment, Fire, no comment, Health, only comment is that this is seared. And then we have a decision by the Conservation Commission. Conservation project within, the Conservation Commission approved an above-reference project through a negative determination under request for determination of applicability. The plan of reference and approval paperwork are attached. And then we have Engineering. This application was reviewed for impacts to public rights away, public utilities. Baywater Court is a public right-of-way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right-of-way. Any changes within the right-of-way would require filing a permit with the Engineering Division. Any connections or alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property abutters or public rights away. Four, there is no proposed increase in roof area. Five, given the nature of the project with no site disturbance, the existing site features, it appears erosion and sedimentation should not be an issue with normal construction practices. However, the contractor should be responsible for implementing erosion and sediment controls if the conditions change. We recommend the following conditions be included. Construction activity shall not cause erosion to or sedimentation into the abutting properties or town right-of-way. End of quotation. That was Engineering, and that's what we have.
Excuse me. Did you say in the beginning that that property was seared?
Uh huh.
I didn't know the sewer was that far over.
Have you got notes?
It is, yeah.
Yeah, I know. I didn't know it. I thought it went up El, but.
For the applicant, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you very much. For the record, Kevin Clower, I'm an attorney here in Falmouth, and I'm here tonight representing Pat Rocha, the owner of 55 Baywater Court. I say Pat Rocha because unfortunately, very recently, Mr. Lerner passed away unexpectedly just a few weeks ago. So I've been asked to still proceed with the application this evening, but it was quite a shock. The applicants are seeking to alter the existing non-conforming dwelling with the expansion of a half-story addition, which will result in a slight increase of lot coverage by structure to 20.95%. This property, 55 Baywater Court, is located just off of Surf Drive, directly across from the beach. It is a dense residential neighborhood. This lot is 7,500 square feet, and it is in the Residential C zoning district. Presently, there's a three-bedroom, single-family dwelling. Footprint is just over 1,500 square feet, which is 20.04% lot coverage by structure. It is non-conforming only to lot coverage by structure, and even and barely so. At 20.04, 20% is allowed by right and up to 25 by special permit. It is otherwise conforming to all setbacks and lot coverage requirements. They're proposing a modest addition. It's a half-story addition with a cantilever deck, which will slightly increase that coverage by 68 square feet, resulting in lot coverage by structures of 20.95%. Proposed ridge height will be at 34 feet, 5 and 3/4 inches. The proposal does not impact any of the existing setbacks, all of which will remain conforming. There is a minor increase to lot coverage by structure of 68 square feet, meaning 20.95% lot coverage, which is well within the allowable range, and does eliminate the existing nonconformity with the issuance of a special permit. The proposed room meets the definition of a bedroom, though that is not its intended use. However, this is on town sewer, which allows, in this district, up to four bedrooms by right. Due to the existing non-conforming lot coverage and the proposed non-conforming lot coverage by structure, this requires a special permit under 240, 10.2A, and 240, 11.3A4. Under 10.2A, pre-existing non-conforming structures may be changed by special permit if this Board finds that what is proposed is not substantially more detrimental than what currently exists. You're asked to consider the standards of 240, 12.1E, and whether or not the alteration creates any new nonconformities and pairs views and vistas in reasonably conform to the neighborhood. In this case, as is noted, there's no new nonconformities created. The existing non-conforming setbacks, or, I'm sorry, the existing setbacks which are conforming are unaffected. There's no change to the views and vistas, and it does conform to the neighborhood. Under 240, 11.3A4, lot coverage by structure in the RC zoning district may exceed 20%, but the Board is asked to consider the size and height of the structure in relation to the neighborhood, the effects of shadow, the impacts on views and vistas from public ways, and the effect of nitrogen on coastal embayments. In preparing the law comparison worksheet, this house is below the average footprint and well within the range of gross floor area and lot coverage. It's certainly in character with the neighborhood. The increase in height here is only five feet, so it should have little to no impact on views and vistas and shadow. Existing ridge is 29 feet, 4 inches, and we're going to 34 feet, 5 inches. Though there is an increase in bedroom, as I've noted, it is within the number allowed by that sewer district. This project, as proposed, represents an improvement for the owners. It adds useful habitable space and is by no means substantially more detrimental than what exists. There's no new dimensional nonconformities. All setbacks will remain conforming. Lot coverage by structures paving. Parking will remain conforming, and the only issue, nonconforming issue is the lot coverage by structure, but if allowed by special permit, is eliminated as a nonconformity. This meets the requirements of 1040, 10.2A, and 240, 12.1E, and I believe this Board can and should grant the special permit, and I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have.
Board questions. Start with you, Mark.
Everybody who submits an application is required to submit a certified plot plan, correct?
Uh huh.
Well, this is two weeks in a row, or two meetings in a row, where the lot lines and the lot corners are, again, marked on the stake, approximate. I don't see how you can certify an approximation, and where's that coming from? I asked you again. I mean, it's the same thing last week.
That was, it was a few weeks ago, and it was a different engineer at that time. And I asked that engineer, in the past case, it was for Cape and Islands Engineering, BSS Engineering is the engineer on this project. I asked Cape and Islands, and they said that when they're placed, because they have someone who places them, they typically will say approximate. They've asked them not to do that anymore moving forward because they place them via GPS, they're not placing them with instruments. The surveys are done via instruments, but they're not placed via instrument.
So we won't see those again?
I can tell you, I will talk with Tom. He's not here right now. He is planning on coming for a later hearing. I'll talk with him about that. But I did speak with Cape and Islands about that, and they told me they wouldn't be doing that moving forward.
Yeah, because, I mean, we had the one on Chappaquoyd Island. I mean, and I'd be satisfied with, even if you wrote offset or something, but I mean approximate. And then there was, there wasn't a, not that I could find, of course, I climbed both fences. I didn't fall in the hole that Frank fell in, but I could not find a stake in the northwest corner. But we'll settle for no more approximations. And other than that, it's a great little project.
Suzanne?
Kevin, is this an RB or an RC zone?
I believe it's RC.
The plan says RB.
It does, but the application says RC, and the town hasn't noted it as RC. So we can revise, we can have that revised and a new plan submitted if you'd like.
We just have to remember.
Yep. But I noted in my, in testimony that it was an RC, and that's what the town hasn't zoned us.
And then it also says in the plan Historic District. Do we have any information?
I'm actually not sure this is a Historic District.
Under your notes, under.
No, I understand. It might be the Historic Register District. This is not a part of a Historic District.
I didn't think it was either.
Yeah.
I was just wondering why it's on there, that's all.
I didn't think.
Possible Scribner's error.
Yeah, a lot of clerical cleanup.
Scott?
No, lot comparison worksheet, to your point. The average was 20.98, and we're at 20.95, so you're certainly well below that, but, no, good project. Thank you. No further questions.
I don't think I have any questions. Public comment. Board discussion.
Nothing from me.
Nothing. How would the Board like to proceed?
Motion to close.
Motion to close. Second, Suzanne. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Hearing is closed. No further testimony will be taken. How would the Board like to proceed?
Motion to approve with conditions.
Motion to approve with conditions. Number by Scott, second by Suzanne. Findings?
Findings, let's see. The lot size is 7,500. Existing, I have 20.04 over 24.36, and proposed is 20.95 over 25.27. Kevin has indicated it's 34.5 feet, the ridge. It's seared. We did have the conservation.
Non-determination, yep.
We have a comp sheet, and we just need to.
RC zoning, yeah. RC zoning district, plant says RB. Testimony, it's RC. Going to four bedrooms, which is permissible by right in the sewer district. The increase of 68 square feet is a result of a cantilever deck, but for the fact it's over 20%, this would not be before us. The special permit will eliminate the nonconformity. We had lot comparisons submitted, not more detrimental. No opposition offered at the hearing. No opposite, there was no opposition in the file, correct? I didn't, okay, just wanted to make sure. Any additional findings?
Not today.
Conditions?
Per plans.
Per plans, work hours.
Work hours.
Engineering comments.
Concom.
Con, yes, NDR, yeah, all comments.
Do you want an as-built for the height, six?
Yeah, it's an as-built for height, as we're going up. Yep, height certed framing, since we're going just shy of the maximum.
That.
Anything else?
Not today, I can't discern.
No other structures?
Well, they could come back. They could form more percent if they want to come back with a shed, but they'd have to get a special permit to expand.
No storm water?
I'm sorry?
No storm water.
No storm water, yeah. That's part of engineering comments.
Yeah.
Anything else?
I think that's all I've got.
All those in favor would, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's a vote.
All right. Thank you.
Next up, we have 07723 Hanwell, 15 Grove, oh.
It was Frank.
Frank, no, what's going on?
Here he is, he sees us.
Next up, 07723 Hanwell, 15 Grove Street, North Falmouth, requesting a special permit to construct an addition and attach garage with habitable space above exceeding 20% lot coverage by structures.
We have Kevin and Kathleen Hanwell of 55 Lori Lane, North Adibor, Mass., apply to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Section 240, 102A, and 240, 11, 3A4 (the Code of Falmouth) to construction an addition and attach garage with habitable space above exceeding 20% lot coverage by structures on subject property known as 15 Grove. Let's see what we have from town boards. From Planning, we have no comment. Assessors, no comment. Fire Department, no comment. Health, property in New Silver Sewer area, refer to wastewater division for comments. And so we have Engineering. This application was reviewed for impacts to public rights away and public utilities. Grove Street is a public right-of-way in this area. The proposed alterations within the public right-of-way would require filing a permit with the Engineering Division. We would not approve the plan as submitted. A solid surface apron, asphalt, concrete, or modular is required for all driveway connections to the public road surface. Note that the apron will be in the right-of-way and would have no impact on lot coverage. We request that the Board either require the applicant to obtain an approved driveway permit from the Engineering Division prior to closing the hearing for the special permit, or that the Board include the following condition of the special permit. Quotations, the applicant shall obtain an approved driveway permit and post any required bond with the Engineering Division prior to the start of construction. The applicant shall complete the work as approved by the Engineering Division in the driveway permit, end of quote. Two, any conditions or alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property abutters or public rights away. Four, infiltration measures are proposed for the roof areas as we typically recommend. Five, whereas this project falls in the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, we defer to the Conservation Commission for stormwater management and construction erosion controls. Note that we will require a construction entrance as part of the driveway permit. And let's see, what else we have? No comment there. Current, this is Water. I received the, this is from the Water Department. The current water service is three fifths water, I mean copper, from 1957. The water service line should be upgraded to a 1-inch to meet current standards. And the, this is from Alyssa Bergeron, that's Concom. This was approved on 9/20, but the order has not been written yet. Attached is a revised plan that was wrote it on, and only changes to the plantings, not the structure of the hardscape. And this one's from Amy Lowell. Up to three bedrooms is allowed by right in New Silver Beach. If a modification to the sewer connection will be required, the property owner's representative will need to apply for sewer connection modification permit with a plan showing the proposed change, otherwise just to protect the existing sewer connection during construction. Let's see if I have letters. I have a comp sheet. Six letters in support? More? No. Wrote it on the wrong one.
No, not in this case.
Not in this case?
No letters.
No letters. Okay, that was a different one, sorry. No letters.
We would take six letters.
That would have been nice. Sorry.
Is that it?
That's it.
For the applicant.
Good evening again, Kevin Clower. I am representing Kevin and Kathy Hanwell, the owners of 15 Grove Street. Mr. and Mrs. Hanwell are here with us this evening. They are seeking permission to alter the existing nonconforming structure on their property. This is located in the northern portion of New Silver Beach, which is a very dense residential, largely seasonal neighborhood. This lot is 9,443 square feet, and it is in the RC zoning district. Presently, there's a two-bedroom, single-family dwelling with a footprint of 1,740 square feet. It's nonconforming to front yard setback, being 16.9 where 25 is required, and side yard setback to the west being 1.5 feet where 10 is required. It's otherwise conforming to lot coverage and rear yard setbacks. The applicant's proposing an addition, which is a garage with a master suite above and will allow them to reconfigure some of the existing living space. Relative to the existing nonconformities, the front yard setback is unaffected. The side yard setback is improved, 1.5 feet to 5.8. There's an elimination of the existing steps and landings in two locations on the western side of the house. The lot coverage by structure will increase it to 25%, which is allowable by special permit. The bedroom count will increase to three, as noted. Each sewer district has its own limitations as to how many bedrooms you can have. New Silver happens to be three. The other sewer districts are four, so there will be an increase of a third bedroom, but that is allowed by right within the New Silver Sewer District. The proposed ridge height here is 22 feet, 2 and 3/4 inches, which is well below the 35 allowed. This will require special permit under 1040, 240, 10.2A, and 240, 11.3A4. Again, under 10.2A, pre-existing nonconforming structures may be changed by special permit provided the Board finds that it's not substantially more detrimental than what exists. There's no new nonconformity being created here. The existing, an existing nonconformity will be improved. A lot of the same requirements under 240, 10.2A are there under 11.3A4, which allows for lot coverage up to 25% in the RC zoning district. And the Board's asked to consider the size and height of the structure in relation to the neighborhood, the effect of shadow, impacts on views and vistas from public ways, and the effect of nitrogen on coastal embayments. New Silver, as a neighborhood, has a broad range of houses, both in terms of size and style. The proposal is among the larger and immediate area. However, it's certainly in character with nearby properties. On our law comparison worksheet, I noted seven with larger footprints and five with larger gross floor areas. The proposed ridge is only 22 feet, so there should be very little impact on views and vistas and shadow. And though, again, there is a bedroom increase, it is allowed in the New Silver Sewer District. The project represents significant improvement over the existing conditions for the applicant. It provides a garage, parking, better living space, a master suite, better use of the existing space within the house as well. The existing nonconformity, the side yard nonconformity is approved. There's no new dimensional nonconformities. There's no adverse effects here, and certainly none that would over-balance the benefits I've outlined. There's nothing about this proposal that is substantially more detrimental than what exists. I believe it meets all the standards of 240, 10.2A, 11.3A4, and 12.1E. I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have, but otherwise, I believe that you can issue the special permit.
Start with board questions. Start with you, Scott.
No, I understand the project. It's, as you mentioned, Attorney Clower, when you look around the neighborhood, it's clearly the way things have been moving. I guess, again, just if we're going to, as you are going right up to the 25% maximum, that we probably want to have a foundation plant certified.
Absolutely.
So that's my only comment.
Suzanne?
Thank you.
I have none. Nothing.
Mark?
Not much, although I did walk around there, and I found quite possibly one of the nicest neighborhoods in town.
It's up there. It's like top, top three, top four.
But other than that, no, it's a great improvement. It's a nice little neighborhood there.
Frank?
I have no questions.
I made a note that this is largely a seasonal neighborhood, but that's really been transitioning in the past few years. There's more and more year-round people living there.
Yeah, the one directly in back seems to be.
And it's, it's really, it's nice to see, and there's a lot of young families in the neighborhood, too.
I have no questions. Public comment? Seeing none. How would the Board like to proceed?
Motion to close.
Motion to close. Mr. Fenneran, a second. Mr. Murphy, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing is closed. No more testimony will be taken. How would the Board like to proceed?
Motion to approve with conditions.
Give that to Mr. Peterson. Is there a second?
Second again.
Give that to Suzanne. Findings?
Findings, let's see. It's in an RC zone over the District of Wild Harbor. Flood zone, it's an AE15. Lot size is 9,443. It's on a public road. Kevin indicated 22 feet high, correct?
Twenty-three quarters.
Twenty-two and three quarters?
Well, nicely, I'm showing 23, 2 and 3/4. I think it depends which.
Which, which page?
Height you're looking at.
So.
Looking at AE2.1, which is the front elevation, and that's showing a total of 23.
23, 2 and 3/4.
23.2?
23, 2 and 3/4.
Given that it's going to be per plans, and we're nowhere near the cap, I don't think we need to get too bogged down on that one.
No, not to worry. Seared, there's a comp sheet. We will get a decision from Concom. And I think that's all I have.
Existing is 1,750 square feet, going to 2,360. The proposal will eliminate or reduce the existing nonconformities. The bedroom count is per right in that particular sewer district. That's it?
Yeah.
Any additional findings? Frank?
Mark?
Conditions?
All boards, Concom.
All boards, Concom.
Water goes under that with the news.
Water to be updated. Standard hours of work, engineering comments, per plans.
Driveway apron.
Driveway apron, the foundation cert.
Right, yeah.
Make sure that they're not exceeding 25%.
I have 26.1 on mine, and that's probably wrong.
26.1 is total.
Okay.
Not, yeah.
Okay, that is correct, okay. And 25, okay.
Additional water service.
Yeah. You got that.
So we also had removed and not replaced the shed at the northeast.
Ah, yes.
Oh.
Yes.
How did that get by us?
Some deck.
Yeah, no additional lot coverage.
Right.
What was the other thing I was going to ask? Oh, findings, no opposition at the hearing or offered.
Those six letters went away quick.
Yeah, the water is going to require modifications to their sewer connection.
Yep.
Did it require it, did it?
Was this the driveway one?
It said it required.
That just goes under comments, though, right?
Yes.
Okay. Good, I think we're good.
Anything else? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is a vote.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time on this one tonight.
Next up, we have 07823 McCormick, 43 Salt Pond Road, Falmouth, requesting a special Next up, we have 07823 McCormick, 43 Salt Pond Road, Falmouth, requesting a special permit to remove a portion of the existing deck and construct a second-floor addition over a portion of the dwelling.
We have Stephen and Mary Colleen McCormick, 6 Marilyn Road, Medfield, Mass., applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Section 240, 10-1(c)(3) in parentheses of the Code of Falmouth, to remove a portion of the existing deck and construct a second-floor addition over a portion of the dwelling on subject property known as 43 Salt Pond Road in Falmouth. And from boards, we have conservation decision. The Conservation Commission approved the above referenced project through a negative determination under request for determination of applicability. The plan of reference and determination are attached. We have engineering. This application was reviewed for impacts to public rights away and public utilities. Salt Pond Road is a public right-of-way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right-of-way. Any changes within the right-of-way would require filing a permit with the Engineering Division. Two, any connections or alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property or butters or public rights-of-way. Four, with the existing fencing, proposed work area location, and lot grades, it appears that erosion and sedimentation should not be an issue with normal construction practices. However, the contractor should be held responsible for implementing erosion and sediment controls if conditions change. We recommend the following condition be included. Quotations, a construction activity shall not cause erosion or sedimentation to the abutting properties or town right-of-way. End of quotation. Properties on sewers, no comments from health. Assessors have no comment. Planning, no comment. Fire department, no comment. Run a roll here, Laura. That is the flood zone. Water department, no comment. And this is Salt Pond. Hearing was scheduled for Thursday, 10:05. The applicant's representative is requesting if you issue a referral. The link for the application is in the below email. We have six letters of support and a comp sheet, and that's what I have.
What the applicant?
Thank you, and good evening. Laura Moynihan for the record for the applicant, and Mr. McCormick is here with me as well. This is an application for 43 Salt Pond, and we have the GIS map here, and this property shown on the GIS map is right here, off of Mill Road in a very lovely neighborhood. This is a photograph of the existing home. The house was built in about 1947. Has three bedrooms. It is in a developed neighborhood with similar lot areas. The lot size is 84, 8410 square feet. Zone residential C. It is on the sewer, and there are existing drywells, as shown on your plan. The existing lot coverage by structures is nonconforming at 29%. The overall lot coverage at 38.4% is conforming. There is a existing nonconforming side yard setback, slightly under 10 feet, at 9.8. The front yard setback to the dwelling is conforming at 25 feet. There is a setback shown on the plan to a stone step, which Mr. McCormick tells me is not attached to the dwelling, and that's at 22.1 feet. So I would say the dwelling is actually conforming because that step is not attached. The existing building height is 17 feet. The proposal calls to remove the three first-floor bedrooms and replace with a first-floor master and enlarged kitchen-living area to add a second story over the garage and relocate the additional bedrooms on the second floor with a new bathroom. Four bedrooms are proposed, one on the main floor, three on the second, and the sewer bylaw does allow four bedrooms by right in this area, and Amyole did send you a referral, I think, today, and that is confirmed in your file, that the four bedrooms are allowed by right. The applicant proposes to remove a good portion of the existing deck, and the new building height will be 23 feet with an increase by only 6 feet. There will be a slight decrease in lot coverage by structure to 28.2%. A slight decrease in overall lot coverage to 37.6%. And I think there will be an obvious improvement to the house exterior and the outdated interior spaces. Utilities will also be moved out of the crawl space to the first floor, and Mr. McCormick tells me as well that there will not be any changes needed to the sewer connection. The water service is at 1 inch already. This is the portion of the deck that's coming off in the back. Otherwise, there aren't any footprint changes. And this is the existing elevation, which you have in your file, and this is the proposed elevation, showing you the second-floor addition over the garage area, and this is the left-side elevation for that. And then we have the rear and the other side elevation for the proposed. I would submit there aren't any adverse impacts on the adjacent properties or the neighborhood. No adverse impacts to traffic. I did submit a lot coverage analysis, although this is a 240, I'll call it a 240-3 application. I haven't got the new sections down yet, but alteration to a pre-existing nonconforming structure, it's not a lot coverage application under the former 240-69E because the lot coverage is already over 25%, so it's nonconforming. But we did submit the analysis because the board likes to see it and showing that there are neighboring properties over 25%. And the size and the height of the dwelling is in keeping with the neighborhood homes. There's a few here to show you. This is that 30 Salt Pond, 246 Mill Road, which is right at the corner abutting the applicant's property. And again, 246 Mill Road. This is 244 Mill Road, and 20 Salt Pond Road, and 9 Salt Pond Road. So there's definitely a mixed neighborhood there. I would submit that the change is not substantially more detrimental than the existing dwelling. There are no increases to the nonconforming side yard setback or the front yard setback to the dwelling. There is a slight decrease in lot coverage overall. There would be beneficial impacts to the neighborhood due to the improved dwelling, and of course, beneficial impacts for the applicant to have an updated, improved dwelling. And therefore, I would submit the standards of the bylaw for your review are met, and we did have the neighborhood support. So here are the letters from three, direct to butters, the adjacent lot, which is at the corner, and two directly across the street filing support letters. So that is our application. Be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Board questions. Start with you, Frank.
I don't have any questions.
Mark?
No, not that I'm familiar with the house, actually. It used to be on McCormick that lived next door, right? Any relation?
My sister lives across the street.
Yeah, I used to know the Sheehans. I spent a lot of time on that house. I worked on it a lot, too, actually. But I have no questions. It's certainly overdue.
I know it's well below. What's the proposed ridge height with the addition now?
I believe it was 23.
Just want that for the record.
Six feet higher.
No, it looks like a really lovely project. It's a beautiful house. I enjoy going down Mill Road after work, taking the long way home, so.
Gorgeous neighborhood, I know. Especially weather-like we've had the past.
Yes.
Agreed. It's a great project. Looks good.
As usual, your PowerPoint's perfect. You answered all the questions that usually the board has, so appreciate that, and it's a good project, so thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment? None. How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to close.
Going to give that one this time to Mr. Finnegan. I'll give the second to Suzanne.
Yeah, I'll take it.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Hearing is closed. No further testimony will be taken. How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to approve with conditions.
Motion to approve with conditions to Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second to Suzanne. Discussion? All right. Findings?
Findings, it's in an RC zone, overlay district Salt Pond, flood zone AE12. Lot size is 8410. It's on a public road. The ridge height is 23. Existing is 29 over 38.4, and proposed is 28.2 over 37.6, so they are bringing it down. It's sewored. Six letters in support. We have the comp sheet. Four bedroom. I think that's all I have for findings.
They did submit a, it's more of a building permit issue, but they did submit a FEMA worksheet, not showing it's not going to trigger. Do, the nonconformity is a side yard setback. Lot coverage sheet was, six letters in support. No new nonconformities, not more detrimental. Any additional findings? Good. Conditions?
Per plan.
Per plans. Hours of work. Incorporate any conditions from referrals from other town agencies. Anything else?
No additional.
Structures, yeah. There are 37. All town boards?
Yep. Anything else?
I think that's it.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? That is a vote.
Thank you.
And lastly, under new hearings, we have 079-23 Munson, Stane-Pine, 88 Jewellers Avenue, East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to remove the existing garage and shed and to raise and rebuild the existing nonconforming, single-family dwelling.
Okay, we have John H. Munson and Aaron Stane-Pine, 29634 Turnberry Drive, Daggsboro, Delaware. All right now. Have applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Section 240-10-2A and 240-11-3A4 in parentheses of the Code of Falmouth to re-roof the existing garage and shed and to raise and rebuild the existing nonconforming, single-family dwelling. The subject property is 88 Jewellers Ave. Let's go to town boards and see what we have. We have planning, no comment. Engineering. The application was reviewed for impacts to public rights away and public utilities. Jewellers Ave and Horton Street are private rights-of-way in this area. Any connections or alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property or butters or public rights-of-way. Four, drywells are proposed to the roof, as we typically recommend. Five, we recommend the following condition be included. Upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address of this residence, prefixing legible numbers required. There is a time limit for this compliance. Six, where the project falls in the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, we defer to, we defer to the Conservation Commission for stormwater management and construction erosion controls. That was engineering. This project is before the Conservation, 9/20. Water department, no comment. I don't know who that is. The property went to the Board of Health hearing on 9/11. It was continued to 10/2. The BOH approves for variance. The BOH approvals for variance to setbacks. Okay, and I have, BOH approved a five, the Board of Health approved the five-bedroom design. They visited the site, so they're all set with conservation. I think that's all we have, right?
I think there was correspondence regarding the ridge height issue of the gable, and that the building inspector indicated that was not considered, that was ornamental.
Oh, yeah. That was in letters.
Or I should say, in compliance with the.
Yeah, overhang or something. Still at 35 feet.
I can address that during my presentation.
Okay.
Anything else?
Nope.
No opposition or?
No letters, right?
Letters in favor? For the applicant.
Good evening, Kevin Clower. I am before you, representing Jack Munson and Aaron Stane-Pine, the owners of 88 Jewellers Avenue. I'm joined tonight by Clark Brewer, who is the architect on this project, and though he's not here just yet, I am expecting Tom Bunker to be here as well. We are asking permission for the raise and rebuild of the existing nonconforming dwelling. This property, 88 Jewellers Avenue, is located at the southern end of Central Avenue, really in the heart of the Minot neighborhood. It's a very cool area, and it's one you don't have opportunity to get to very often. And, you know, I'm always kind of struck by it because if you don't know it's there, you forget it's there. This lot is just shy of 6,000 square feet. It's 5,960 square feet in the RB zoning district, and it is in an AE13 flood zone. Presently, there's a five-bedroom, single-family dwelling with a detached garage and a sizable shed. The total footprint is 2,067 square feet. The existing structures are nonconforming in a number of ways. The dwelling is nonconforming to front yard setback, being 2.8 feet where 10 is required. Side yard setback to the west, being 8.5 feet where 10 is required. Side yard setback to the east, being 5.3 feet where 10 is required. The garage has a side yard setback of 9.3 feet, and the lot coverage by structures is 34.8 where 20% is allowed by right and up to 25 by special permit. This house was built in 1875, and it was shifted to its present location in 1905. Surprisingly, it's neither in a historic district or on the list of historically significant structures. Mr. Munson and Ms. Stane-Pine, father and daughter, have owned this property together since 2022. However, it has been in their family since 1905, which, for the math challenge of us, is 118 years of continued family ownership. Over the course of that time, the house has been well-loved, but at this point needs significant repair, both cosmetically and structurally. Given the location in an AE12 flood zone, the scope of repairs make compliance with flood zone standards necessary, which will require elevation of the structure. So we are asking to raise the existing structure and to rebuild a new one compliant with flood zone requirements. Pursuant to those requirements, both under the Building Code and FEMA regulations, the structure must be raised such that all habitable space and mechanicals are at least one foot above the flood zone elevation. In this case, that's elevation 13, which is about 6 feet above grade. Included in the submission were two determination letters from the building commissioner. The first was a designation as to the front yard, in which he agreed that Horton Street, though undeveloped, it's the paper street that runs between the dwelling and the ballfield, is considered the front yard for zoning purposes. The second determination letter regards the proposed height, in which he agreed that the ornamental gable facades do not count towards height. The build, the zoning bylaw defines height, excludes from height minor extensions of structures which are ornamental in nature, and Mr. Street did agree that the proposed ornamental, the proposed gable facades were strictly ornamental in nature and therefore not counted, appropriately not counted towards the height. The proposed dwelling reduces the clutter on the lot. It eliminates the existing detached garage and shed. Includes the garage as a part of the primary dwelling. It maintains the same number of bedrooms as existing, and there is a new five-bedroom system approved by the Board of Health, which is to be installed. As to the existing nonconformities, the side yard to the setback to the east will be unaffected. They'll remain 5.3 feet. Lot coverage by structure is marginally improved, goes from 34.8 down to 34.46. I do think it's worth noting, I brought this up at other hearings, that until 2004, residential C allows a lot coverage of up to 35% by right, which is why we see a lot of these structures with that, with those sort of percentages. The setback to the garage is eliminated. The front yard setback is approved, improved. It goes from 2.8 to 7.7. That's to the steps. The house itself is improved from 3.9 feet to 19.6. The side yard setback to the west is also eliminated as a nonconformity. It will be, now be 10.8 feet. The lot coverage by structures paving and parking, though not a nonconformity, I think it's worth noting, that also will decrease from 37.77 down to 35.77, below the 40% allowed. And lastly, and perhaps most importantly, will comply with FEMA requirements. This project quite clearly requires a special permit under 240-10.2A and 11.3A4. Under 10.2A, pre-existing nonconforming structures may be changed by special permit, provided they're not substantially more detrimental than what exists. Again, you're asked to consider the standards of 240-12.1E, on whether or not the alteration creates any new dimensional nonconformities, impairs views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the neighborhood. Here, there's no new nonconformities created. The existing nonconformities are either improved or eliminated. Relative to 240-11.3A4, the board is asked to consider the size and height of the structure in relation to the neighborhood, effects of shadow, impacts on views and vistas from public ways, and the effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments. The proposed house is larger than what exists, but as proposed, as proposed, it will be among the larger in the area. It is, however, by no means an outlier within the neighborhood. The architect, Mr. Brewer, is actually a member of the family, has spent his entire life in this house and in this area, has great reverence for the neighborhood, and the home was designed to be in character with that. Spending some time in the neighborhood myself in preparation for this, I believe that goal was achieved. It's very much in line with the neighborhood, both aesthetically and visually. With that consideration, I believe there's limited impacts on shadowing of views and vistas, and there's no effect on nitrogen, as it's the same number of bedrooms with a newly designed and improved system. We are aware of the comment from Scott McGann on health regarding the office. If the board is inclined to approve this, we'd be glad to condition submitting revised plans with a case opening to address his concern, which is what he noted in his email. In addition, we'd be glad to provide ASBIL certifications relative to height at framing and to lot coverage. This project represents significant improvement over the existing conditions. As I've noted, the existing nonconformities are either improved or eliminated. The front yard setback's improved. The side yard setback to the west is eliminated. Lot coverage by structure is reduced. Lot coverage by structures paving and parking remains conforming and is reduced, and it will comply with the flood zone requirements. There's no new dimensional nonconformities, and there's certainly no adverse effects that overbalance the benefits of outlined. There's nothing about this proposal that is substantially more detrimental than what exists today. This meets all the requirements necessary for the bylaw, including 10.2A, 11.3A4, and 12.1E. For these reasons, I would ask that you grant the special permit, but I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have.
Board questions. Start with you, Scott.
Thank you. Beautiful older home, and you're doing a very nice job with the rebuild, so it's a great project. Kevin, again, just to confirm, the case opening for the office, correct? Five bedrooms, correct? There was discussion in the Board of Health information about the septic system setback. Could you just kind of...
So there were certain variances required from the Board of Health relative to the proposed system for setbacks. They have a concept called maximum feasible compliance. So even if you can't come completely into compliance with what today's requirements are, you can have as many bedrooms as you currently have, provided you come as close to compliance as possible. So there are a few variances that were issued by the Board of Health as part of their approval.
Okay. Then lastly, as Attorney Clower mentioned, we'll condition the 35-foot ridge height, but we'll get through that. That's it. Thank you.
No, my question was just about the variances from the Board of Health. I've answered, so I think it's a nice project. Mark?
No, other than I'm kind of curious, where was it moved from?
70 feet to the west. 70 feet to the east or west.
Oh, short distance.
Where the big lot is? Where that big open lot is?
No, no. It was sideways.
Tom, just pointed out that the plan that's before you on our screen that the Board of Health approved actually was approved without any... Without the necessity of any variances.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Frank?
Well, Mr. Clower, as you observed early, this is a neighborhood one doesn't see very often. In fact, in 51 years, it's the first time I got to see it.
And it's cool.
It is.
There's a lot of little.
And this has got to be the smallest lot we've dealt with, though, in my tenure here on the board. It is very small and tight. So I give the architects some credit for coming up with the solution, but I have no further questions.
I'll echo on that, actually, though. Even with this, there are still four houses with greater lot coverage in the neighborhood, so... Public comment?
We've lived there long enough and expect them.
Seeing none. How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to close?
Motion to close. Scott? Second, Attorney. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Hearing is closed. No further testimony will be taken. Does the board need any discussion on this project? How would it like to proceed?
Motion to approve of conditions.
That's to Scott.
Second.
Second to Suzanne. Findings?
Findings, we're in an RB zone, flood zone AE-12, AE-13, and VE-14. Lot size 5940. They have been smaller, Frank. Believe it or not. It's on private roads, plural, I'll say that. The height is 42.9, is that what I have?
So that's the elevation.
Yeah.
The height, the ridge height is 35 feet.
35, okay. That's including the ornamental.
Does not include the ornamentals.
Not including. Okay, 35, sorry. I was just looking at the plan. Let's see.
Five bedrooms.
Five bedrooms. We have a comp sheet. FEMA approved. Anything else we can think of here?
There'll be elimination of the west side, nonconforming setback. Lot coverage is being reduced to 34.04. At least that was my note. There is correspondence from the building commissioner and the attorney. Building commissioner is in agreement concerning the gable height that would be... Although above 35 feet would be in compliance.
Gable extensions, yeah.
The extension. I will suggest the board accept that. Let's see, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. You said FEMA compliance.
Yep.
Keeping with the neighborhood, not more detrimental. No opposition at the hearing. No opposition in the file. Any additional findings? Scott?
No.
Conditions? Hours of work per revised plans to include a cased opening of the office on the plans. Concom...
Do you want that height?
Yeah, we're tickling the heights. Case opening for the office.
Yep, case opening of the office. As-built, has to height and foundation. No additional lot coverage or sheds and so on. Standard hours of work. Maureen, anything else?
No habitable space in the basement?
Yes.
Or zone. So we're asserting the height and lot coverage?
Yep, please.
Engineering?
Yep, all other additional referrals or conditions for town boards.
Yeah, they closed the hearing. We expect their decision in two weeks.
Revised plan with the...
Cased opening to the office. Frank, or Mark?
I think you've got it covered.
Okay, you mean to jump down your throat in that?
No, I think we're good.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed. That is a vote.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Your creation.
Before I walk away, even though she's gone, I'd be remiss if I didn't say that Laura Moynihan is leaving private practice, and this variable may have been her final ZBA hearing after 20 some odd years here in Fallon. And I just think that should be acknowledged.
She would have said something.
I didn't know she was leaving right away, but I just want... I think that should be noted and as part of the record.
Yeah.
She's been a fantastic advocate over the years.
Absolutely. Great. Thank you for that information.
Thanks.
That concludes the new hearings on tonight's agenda. That's what I was going to... Oh, sorry. Given that we indicated that there was going to be a change, we're going to take a brief recess to the sound of the next gavel to allow people to tend to personal needs.
All right. Put this one in the bag.
Welcome back. As indicated earlier, we took a few things out of order this evening. I believe notice was sent to as many people as possible. I'll thank everyone who's here for the final hearing this evening, the continuation of 06120M EcoLand Development LLC, Zero Percival Road, Lot 4, T-Ticket, requesting the board to review revised plans for the comprehensive permit pursuant to a mediation sent to two by the parties during the applicant's appeal. And on this evening are all the regular voting members. For the applicant's counsel, good evening.
I do have a new letter to read in, if I can.
Certainly.
It says, "Hi, my name is Jen Scala. As all of you know, I am an abutter of the Percival proposed project, and like every other abutter except for one, I am against this from going forward due to safety concerns." The same concerns that were shared by the previous board that denied the project. "I'm hearing in the wind that the town believes passing this project will give the town a say in what goes in this project. As an abutter and a 45-year abutter of this development, I am asking you to deny it. Again, nothing is concrete here. Like I've stated before, the road proposed alone is a safety issue. It's over two times the acceptable fire safety length for a dead end. Our town was asking for two-in-one-bedroom homes. This is three with a non-sufficient parking for each home," three-bedroom, I think she means, "clearly leaving the approval by the fire department in question. Not enough parking equals cars in the street, which is against the fire department approval. There is no certified stamped and signed plot plan for the abutters to see. There's a major 10-foot discrepancy on my property, and the entrance is a sure discrepancy also. There is no conclusive entrance to this property. I know there's a lot of talk about mailboxes and site views. As we all know, that corner where the entrance is being proposed is very dangerous. There are multiple accidents here every year. There have been multiple poles, fences, and yards destroyed because of the curve of the road here. This leaves me wondering what the town is going to do about the bus stop children then. Do you think it's a hazard for them to be standing at the end of Percival with this development in place? Or are we going to just move them also after 45 years? The developer has not in any way been cordial or professional with a single abutter except one. We as abutters and taxpayers for decades should have a say. The old boy denied this project, and honestly, little to nothing has changed. Lastly, if this project is approved by the board, I am asking for a 15-foot buffer of vegetation and trees that are already there on the Hanus Drive side. Not a clear cut and replant, but for the vegetation and trees to remain 15 feet. I also ask that the town stake this out because we've already been harassed and threatened by the builder, so what's to stop him from clearcutting and not even knowing his legal boundaries? I am furthermore asking that the 15-foot buffer for the builder be put up to put up a six-foot white stockade fence before this project is even started. This is critical in the safety of our families, our children, and the three-family childcares that are bought this project. Please keep in mind these three-family childcares will be in operation during this project if it goes through. There is an obligation and a liability here to keep all safe. There's a discrepancy in whether the builder plans to clearcut the perimeter of this lot. I ask you to deny this. Leave what's there for trees and vegetation for at least 15 feet. I am also going to assume since my lot at 10 Hanus Drive has recently been staked by Cape and Islands Engineering that you will respect my property, property boundaries that are clearly marked and not that of the builder who is off by 10 feet without a stamped, signed, certified plot plan. We need it staked, we need it staked about also. Trespassing and destruction of property is a legal offense. My property is clearly staked. Between the lawyers and the abutters, there is enough facts to deny this project due to safety, discrepancy, and the nature of the proposed project. We as abutters want to take the chance with the denial rather than the town thinking they will be helping us out with an approval so they can oversee it. Please deny this project at least until a clear, signed, certified plot plan with clear legal boundaries along the entire property has been stamped, signed, staked, and marked. Deny this project until all abutters have shown these plans and can visually see the property marked so we can clear up all discrepancies. Deny until clear drainage sewer, sewerage, entrance, entrances, I think she means, there's no R, have been established. We need clarity. We need boundaries. We need safe legal entrance, one that is owned by the property owner of Zero Percival. We need clear legal plans in all caps. I am truly hoping the town accepts our voices as abutters because all but one is against this. This project doesn't have legal clarification the town, the state, or the abutters legally need. This is not safe. Our home, our families, our children, our childcare businesses, and our beautiful neighborhood deserve to be safe and to live in peace. Thank you for your time in reading this letter. And then there was another.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Sorry to object. I let that go forward, but I do think it's appropriate to strike it because it was agreed when you had closed the hearing, but then for understandable reasons, and we agreed you reopened, you reopened it solely for the purpose of obtaining a certified plot plan of the layout of the public right-of-way trotting, trotting park road. And that was done, and information that others, certainly I understand that it's a two-way street, but any information submitted tonight or prior to tonight related to the public right-of-way and the question of the mailboxes and that, that's certainly appropriate, but that is, aside from being a repeat, but you know, that is outside of the scope of what was agreed would be new information for tonight.
So in reviewing the minutes previous to tonight's with the zoning administrator, the motion was made to reopen the hearing. It was not specific as to the issue of what you raised. So it was a general motion to reopen. So we essentially are reopening. By interpretation, at least what the minutes are of this hearing was that it was just too.
Well, I think everybody recall, you know, that there was discussion, I'd call it a gentleman's agreement regardless of what the, what the minute said, regardless of what the motion said, but that was what was discussed. And certainly, I, you know, leave it to you, it's your prerogative, and it's already been read into the record, so I will change what I said. I'm not asking that you strike it, but I think in terms of further discussion.
I'm not going to strike it, but your objection is noted.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
And there is another, of course, piece of correspondence that came in at 5:00 tonight, so none of us have even seen it.
I'm not going to let that in.
So I'm not just saying it's.
That came in beyond, beyond the business hours of the board and not in a timely manner, so I'm not going to include that this evening.
That's all I have.
All right. Good evening, counsel.
Now I can introduce myself, even though I already started talking. Thank you very much. For the record, Peter Freeman, Freeman Law Group, representing the applicant. So really, as I just said, the purpose of reopening and having a hearing tonight was to have that survey done of the public right-of-way layout. It has been done. It was submitted. There were also photographs taken. There were the plans shown identifying where the mailbox, that mailboxes that are within the so-called site distance triangles, and it verified that all of the, I think it's three, maybe four, but I believe it's three mailboxes that are within the site triangle, so for safety should be removed, are within the public right-of-way. So we believe that that gives you the information that you want and that it, you know, jibes with what we have said, that we believe that it's safe, the project is safe and proper from all angles. So naturally, we're happy to discuss anything that you all would like to discuss, but that's really all we have to present. As I said, maybe I didn't say actually, Ed Montero, the principal, is here, and Jack Landers. So if you'd like them to put up anything that we submitted on the screen, we could do that. I didn't feel it necessary for them to actually affirmatively present, but as I said, if you'd like to look at anything with their guidance, of course, we would do that, and also to answer questions. So that's really all we want to say. And again, we would hope that tonight the hearing would be closed, and then I understand however you want to deliberate, certainly, you know. And we're happy to talk about any aspects of the project before you close. Thank you.
Questions from the board. Start with you, Scott.
Would it be possible to show the folks, I guess, at home that the sightlines with, where the mailboxes are within the sightlines and potentially?
Sure. Ed has the, whatever it's called, not the microchip, the little PDF that goes into the the.
Is he alluding that we're not supposed to ask any other questions?
I definitely didn't think it was, for one thing.
What I did was where the surveyors came out, I had them highlight the, where the town right-of-way is, where you saw the stakes. Did anybody go out there and walked where they were?
Yes.
So this is the stakes on where the U-shaped driveway was, which goes as you're coming down south. Here are the mailboxes that are right here. There was actually six, and there's one mailbox, I don't think has a number on it. It's also in the town right-of-way. And as it continues, there was a question about the shrubs. They were tagged, showing that those are all in the town right-of-way, going all the way down. You wanted 200 feet in both directions, and that's what we did.
Yeah, I thought that there was another document.
This is the one I thought was part of his property.
In the town right-of-way.
Their property.
If this is putting up signs.
Okay, that's a little better. Thank you.
I think we kind of talked about having a clear sign.
Yeah, I'm not going to vote for it until we must do.
Certainly appears that it is actually ours.
No, I have no further question. No, thank you, Mr. Montero.
How are we handling the mailbox removal situation with the post office?
Well, I don't know that the post office needs to directly be involved. The post office is like the one in my driveway. It's my own mailbox, probably also in the town of Barnstable's right-of-way. But if the owners don't remove them, the town, without even going through that hearing process that we talked about for private property, the town, and I think it's incumbent upon the town, not to be presumptuous, but assuming that you approve this project and it goes forward, that it's incumbent upon the town, and you can direct the DPW to simply remove the mailboxes. You know, there, I've certainly received letters from both towns that have represented people on as well as my own, where they send a letter and ask you to do that, but that's how I see it.
Now, wasn't it stated that the, some of the residents and the people who own the boxes asked the post office to move it further up Percival Road, but they were denied? And now that they've told Eddie he can have individual mailboxes on his property, it would seem to me that the, and I'm sure that the denial was because they wanted to keep the mail truck right on Trotting Park Road, but now that it's turning, I don't, I'm assuming that, that they would be able to approach the post office and move them all around the corner.
That, that's logical, but I don't want to state that as something that I know.
Well, I don't like to be logical either, so.
Well, no, I understand. I think it is logical. That's what I meant to say. I just don't want to represent that because I don't know of my own knowledge.
No, quite likely might work out that way anyhow, but didn't mean to cut in on you, Suzanne.
Did you, did you check with the post office that they're definitely going to go into this private, private road and do 12 boxes?
Yeah, I went here. Good, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, you have the option of, of doing the individual mailboxes, or you can do the gang box. Even with theirs, if they wanted to do the gang box where there's seven or eight of those mailboxes, they can keep it out of the line of sight and just do a gang box for all of the residents that are there.
Did you check that with the post office?
Excuse me. Need to be recognized, ma'am. Thank you.
That's.
So you haven't picked yet, or what's the final?
Well, the last time we spoke, when the hearing was open, I said I was doing my projects.
We're going to do individuals. And you have gone to the post office and have permission to do that?
I've asked, I've asked them. They said, yes, and I also can, if I wanted to, I can do the gang box.
And you said we're going to go with the 12?
Because that's what was stated in the, in the hearing.
Okay. They were very, Mr. Freeman, they were very picky with me when I did my mailbox, 36 inches. They had all these.
Oh, great.
Rules and regs. They don't just say, hey, you know, move it where you want it.
There are standards, but.
They're very strict.
Someone asked about ownership, and like, you know, like I said, my own box is my own box, as long as it meets those specs.
Okay. And then the zoning administrator had found, I had all, she had showed me, and I had looked at it too. There were a few things on this plan, like street signs and speed signs, that.
What, what you're looking at is the private road that comes in. We have a stop sign before, in the project where you come out onto the Trotting Park Road. We also have a speed sign in the development. I believe it's 15, 20 miles per hour, which you have to post when you have a subdivision road, even though this is a private road. So what we're doing is just abiding by what the subdivision regulations are.
I got one here right on Trotting Park.
What you don't realize is, when I'm coming out on my property, that's not Percival Road. Percival Road stops at the end. My road comes on to Trotting Park Road, so the address is going to be probably 233 Trotting Park Road is going to be the address because it's a private driveway.
All right, I'll just hold off. I don't think you understand what I'm asking.
I don't have as much knowledge of the specifics that Ed just referred to. I did see that, I think, email from Ms. Stockman. But I think an appropriate condition as to signage, if you have concerns, you know, certainly that's something you can do.
Okay.
My concern here is just the line of sight and the way I read the stakes and the way I see it on this plan is, is one of those trees is actually on the private property. And I guess, Norrie, how does that work? Because I'm not going to vote for this thing if, if that line of sight isn't clear. Now, can we dictate to the property owner that they must remove that tree?
No, if it's on private property.
Could you identify which one? Because I don't believe that there is, certainly not a tree.
Certainly, looks like it by this plan. You can see the, right here. And when I, when I looked at it, it looked the same to me. I mean, the, the trunk of the tree appears to be on the other side of the property line. And I looked at it, the front of the actual trunk of the tree, and you can see it's indicated there too, which means that this tree is actually on the private property.
The tree you're talking about is right here.
That's Bush tree.
And that's not, that's not in the line of sight. That's the tree you're talking about. That's not in the line of sight. That's the one.
I think it is.
If you look at the, if you look at the plan that's been attached several times to the Vanoss Jeffrey Dirk submissions, that's outside the line of sight.
Not when I was standing there, or.
By the way, the other response that I had, that I've said repeatedly, and Mr. Wild disagrees with me, but I've said repeatedly that you have the bylaw, which has been and can be utilized, Chapter 199, Section 199 dash 2, about trimming or removal of obstructions. So it is well within the power of the town to initiate that process.
Well, that would be, I mean, I used to own that property, and I'm familiar with it, and when I come down and parked at the end of Trotting Park Road and looked down, let's see, I got, and is not the yellow on this, isn't that's a line of sight?
Hold on.
And those shrubs are certainly within the yellow of the Vaness report. I mean.
You are right here.
Yeah, yeah.
There's your town right-of-way. The tree grows on, on the right-hand side of the line, I mean, and the other side's on the left. It's in the line, it's in the town right-of-way. If you, and if you read the report.
Road layout right-of-way, and it comes, the, the trunk of that tree is on the other side.
That's the tree you're talking about.
Right here, this one.
Yep, that one's.
Over the line. Road layout right-of-way, and the stake is, is in front of that tree. I mean, and that, that tree concerns me. And I have the, I mean, they're, they're in this Vaness report, and the side, the greenery is right there, and, I mean, I don't, I don't want to slow this thing up any more than it has been, and that tree.
That's, that's the stake, and that's where the tree is.
That's, well, not the tree we're talking about. It's one on the other side of the driveway, but I consider both of those in the line of sight. If you could go back to that picture.
Hey, I'm, I'm going to try to find it. Hold on.
I mean, it's just a couple of trees, but, yeah, see?
But what you, what you're not seeing, you're not seeing the angle of the right-of-way. What you're seeing is, is you're not seeing the angle where it comes in over here.
You look at this mark right here on the, then, when you're coming in, you look at him, and then it's coming down.
Yeah, but when I'm at the end of the, I mean, there, right, right there, that's the end of Percival Road. If I look left, I can't even see, I own the other house down the street. I can't even see my house. I mean, that's, those, those trees all definitely obstruct.
And that one's out.
No, no, I'm talking about this one. So that one's gone, which is the, the larger one in front of the house. I mean, that town can take that out, but this one here, I'm just, you know, I mean, it's in the, it's only a couple of inches or whatever, but technically, it's on their property. And if we have to ask them, I, like I said, I'm confused as to how this works.
Well, again, ultimately, you have to look at it and decide, based on your understanding, we dispute your interpretation of it.
It's, it's right here in black and white. The tree is on the other side of the line. It says road layout. I don't see how you can dispute that.
I don't think that's what it shows, and if you look at the plan from Vanoss, which has the yellow that you pointed to, it's in the public right-of-way, so. I don't know, Jack, if you want to comment on it, but.
I'm sorry. I mean, the yellow's right there. That's the line of sight. And those green trees, they're right in the middle of the line of sight. Anybody can pull to the end and look. I mean, it's just a couple of trees, but I mean, I'm not going to vote for this thing if those trees aren't out of the way. I mean, I've seen too many accidents there.
Good evening. For the record, my name's Jack.
Just, I want to make sure, because some, there's going to be an accident here regardless. There's accidents there all the time. I just want to make sure that myself and everybody on this board did everything they could to make this as safe as possible. And, and with those trees, I mean, all that greenery's got to go. And it certainly appears by this that one of those trees is on the Salzman's property. Have, have you reached out to the Salzman's?
That's the only one.
Or to Manny?
Hi, good evening. For the record, my name is Jack Landers-Collie. I had to answer that immediate question. No, I haven't spoken to anyone. A little background information. Unfortunately, plant material is dynamic. It grows, it dies, it regrows, you plant. It's something we have very little control over, and in my 30 years of working in this business, some of the biggest arguments have been trees on property lines. That tree is on my property until that tree falls down, and then it was your tree on your property because you now have to pick it up. So it's always, or it always has the potential to be contentious. I want to make sure that when you do look at these photographs, you understand, we staked the layout. You won't find any staking of the view corridors or the view triangles. They're depicted on the plan accurately. So there is one bush that is right on the property line, that is in the view corridor when you're looking south. The rest of the area, tree or shrubs or trees that are not in the, on a person's property. There is one seven-inch tree to the south that is in the road layout that can be removed. I, correct me if I'm wrong, we haven't had any discussions about looking to the north? It's only to the south and getting clarification at some point?
Well, we've discussed looking to the north as far as the mailboxes are concerned in the.
Okay, but there's no other issue to the north? Okay. So the only issue is to the south. I think you have, if you could bring up this plan.
I think that picture says it all right there. I mean, if you pull up to Trotting Park Road in your car, that's basically the vision you're going to have to your left or to the south, and it's obstructed by all those trees.
Coming from the south, traveling.
Absolutely. See the other way, and kids at a bus stop and.
Is that the one right there?
Look at this. Turn on.
And, and same thing coming this way.
Yeah, I could tape it. He could just. What I am, what I'm talking about is right in this area, I want to make sure you understand. That says seven-inch tree, and to the left of the number seven is the, the trunk of the tree. Now, just to the, just to the northeast and above it is a bush, and that is shown, actually, it's shown just outside the right-of-way.
On, on the private property?
That is correct.
And it's obstructing from both directions, the.
Well, I don't know about both directions.
Well, go put it back on the picture you just had, or the two pictures you had. I mean, it's fairly readily discernible. I mean, it's.
I'm not sure in the right of direction, but we're in that.
Oh, you had it, you just had a picture up there, right there. Now, can, can you see the end of Percival Road there where all the kids are going to be congregating, where the mailboxes are? No, you can't see it through that tree, and you can't see it through the one behind it, which is on their property. I mean, for, for safety, all that greenery should be removed, and it's all depicted right here in the site triangle, right in, right within the yellow. I don't see how anybody can argue that, and I mean.
Yeah, I think a point of order, that the plan that the traffic engineer prepared, it's at such a small scale, you have to draw some conclusion.
There's a stake right beside that, that bush, and it shows it on their property. And as I said, I, I spoke with the previous landowner, and, and he was under the impression that all of these trees were in the town's right-of-way, but that's not the case.
There's one shrub in the way.
We can dictate that all the trees in the town's right-of-way be, be removed, but the one that's on the private property, which is blocking the line of sight, it's right here in the site report, we can't do anything about? I mean, it seems that you're going to have to go negotiate with the landowner. I have no idea.
You know, not being semantical, but our engineer repeats that the tree is in the public right-of-way. There is a bush that is a little bit in, in the private, but the tree, when you use the term tree, the tree is not.
Oh, tree, whatever. Greenery, I think I used.
Yeah, and, and I don't think that, I think that if you feel the need, which I respect that you apparently do, you can come up with a condition. I don't think it would be appropriate to deny the project, but you know, certainly to come up with a condition that might be reasonable.
How can, we can't condition that a tree be removed on private property, though?
Well, again, I disagree with that.
That my understanding?
I disagree with that. I think you, I think you owe it to the, the purpose of the project, affordable housing and to the.
Oh, I owe it to safety, you know.
No, 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 no. I didn't say you waive safety for affordable housing. You didn't let me finish. You can certainly put a condition relating to the process of that, Chapter 99 or 199. You can certainly put a condition that that process be implemented. You can certainly put a condition that that process be implemented. I suppose I'd have to decide what we do if that doesn't lead to, in order from the town to remove the purported obstruction, but that's what that bylaw is there for. So I'm just, you know, respectfully suggesting, I don't think a denial is appropriate, but a condition along the lines of what I just said, if you really believe that that, you know, is an issue, and again, obviously, safety is an issue, that would be, to me, an appropriate condition. That's all I'm saying.
Oh, I don't want to deny it, I mean, I just want to see that those trees are removed.
Which again, that my suggested remedy within the decision is what I said.
Now. Norrie. Does that fly?
All right, so here's the problem, is that the tree in question, or trees in question, is on private property. You don't have the authority to tell them to remove, though there could be a negotiation with, potentially with the property owner, where perhaps they would say, hey, look, it's in the interests of the town to remove this, and maybe we'll replace it with another tree that's further stepped in toward the house, but, you know, I don't know.
If we make such a condition, and for some unforeseen reason, they're not able to come to an agreement, does then it...
Depends on what the condition is.
I want all the trees out of there.
What if the person doesn't want to remove the tree?
Mr. Chairman?
Counsel?
Thank you, I didn't want to, several people speaking, so thank you for recognizing me. I mean, that condition may be reasonable, I'll come back to section 199 in a second, but, you know, I think if something like that's a condition, it could be a timeframe with a statement in the condition, that if it's not achieved, then we have to come back to the zoning board to see if there's another way. And if you don't want to do that, then you can just leave it.
That would be absolutely fine with me.
Yeah, yeah, and again, I suppose, I suppose your conditions in the decision don't have to mention article 199 or section 199-2, but I think it would be helpful in general to the public, even to the neighbors, as well as to the other agencies in town, the select board and the police department, that there's a discussion of it, but understanding that you would probably say, and I think that would be appropriate, that it's the applicant's responsibility to invoke that process, that's all.
As long as it's gone, I'm fine with everything else.
And I understand?
I mean, we need the housing, and it's, you know, it's been remanded back to us, I mean, there's, other than strong conditions, there's little we can do, and I certainly have no desire to stop this project or slow it down any further. So how are we going to condition that?
I guess what I would recommend is that you require removal of everything that's in the road layout, because that's the town's property. Though the mailboxes are going to have to be properly managed, I don't think...
But there's still one tree, that bush, whatever you want to call it.
And then I think they should negotiate with the homeowner, and...
So we can...
Discuss what would be better for, separate from this development, it's in the interest of the town that people can see further down the road.
Absolutely correct.
It will reduce accidents for everybody.
All I want, I want to know that we did the most that we possibly could, because it's just a dangerous stretch of road, and it always will be.
Any other questions? Right?
Well, I share Mr. Finneran's concern about the intersections, and I also have concern about the intersection of Rosewood and Percival Road, too, and also an issue about the clarification about the runoff and drainage issue. But if we were to have a condition on this in the event of an approval, that put the burden on the developer to provide clear sightlines for 250 feet to the north and to the south at the intersection of Percival Road and Trotting Park Road, would the developer be able to comply with that, and what would you do to comply? Now, the second question, we also have issues at the intersection of Rosewood and Percival for 80 feet, so I ask the same question, if we were to put that as a condition, what would the developer do to comply?
First of all, I don't think that that's necessarily an unreasonable condition. Safety, line of sight, absolutely, I understand. To answer as to further up Percival at Rosewood, which I believe is where it turns into, you know, that intersection with the project driveway, if you will, my understanding, and again, Jack or Ed can correct me, is that that's essentially vegetation that will be cleared for the project and is within the control of the applicant. That's, that's how I understand it. That means we wouldn't have to object to the condition, but I believe that's the case. As to both locations, in terms of how would the developer do it, and I agree that it would be appropriate to place the responsibility on the applicant, although, again, I think it might be nice to mention section 19.2, but I think the only thing that the applicant could do would be to meet with the neighbor involved, to negotiate as necessary. I don't know if there's any further reconfiguration, certainly they can't, I guess they're, they could... With the layout that's drawn, I think is the way and the best way to do it, so I don't think there could be a further change in the intersection there of the existing Percival, excuse me, and Trotting Park Road, so I probably shouldn't brainstorm about that. But we would have to make the effort, and if we can't achieve it, then we'd have to find a way to deal with it, and I don't have any suggestion now, because we don't know what discussions will take place and what the reactions will be. Naturally, you know, being candid, if we can't work it out with the neighbors, we'd have to come up with something, and we'd have to come back and ask for modification to this board, where this would be revisited, and hopefully, there'd be something that we would come up with that you'd be satisfied with.
Well, I think it's quite appropriate for a condition to put the burden on the developer to solve this problem, and I'm kind of at a, I'm disappointed, I guess, that we've been talking about this for months, and we don't seem to make any progress, and perhaps tonight we're making a little bit by the agreement that it's the developer's burden to solve this, and I think your idea that with respect to both of these sightline problems, that they be solved before the project gets going any further, and that should be the first order of business to do it.
Again, I don't disagree with that, I assume you mean, again, not being presumptuous, but you're saying by way of conditions, that the logical thing for the applicant to do in moving forward with the project would be to address that, and I agree totally.
The second issue, it's okay to talk about other issues, too?
Yes, by my wisdom.
The issue of the drainage, there's something in one of the presentations you made that when the developer makes the provisions for the drainage in that common area that runs parallel to Rosewood, it'll be turned over to the homeowners association. That doesn't give me a lot of confidence, frankly, because I don't know who this homeowners association is going to be made up of, what assets they're going to have, what abilities they're going to have, and we probably won't know whether the drainage is adequate for maybe a couple of years, I don't know. Can we have some kind of a condition that would require the developer to come back and resolve this even if he's said goodbye?
Well, a couple of things, I mean, that would be unusual once, you know, it is the homeowners association.
Well, it'd be a time limit, I'm not asking for indefinite, but...
Yeah, perhaps with a time limit, I have seen things like that, so I don't think that's crazy, Mr. Duffy, I don't think that's crazy. I would say this, though, you know, the question of concern and is it adequate? The peer review did after back and forth with, you know, with Jack, was satisfied. Now, if, in the homeowners association, it's very typical, as I'm sure you know, to have, to have conditions in an association where they're duty-bound to carry out the manual, the operation and maintenance manual that's part of a project, even though this doesn't involve an order of conditions from the conservation commission, because there are no wetlands. But what I typically do, whether in a homeowner association, a set of covenants, I reference the comprehensive permit and say that it's the obligation of each homeowner, would be in the deeds, too, of each homeowner to comply with the comprehensive permit, and that the homeowners association, really, much as a condo association does without even specifying it, that the HOA, I give them the power to do all this enforcement, you know, so that that's what would happen. It would have to be part of the budget, the stormwater maintenance, management maintenance, so that's the way that it's dealt with, I don't know what other developers do, a lawyer is for developers, but I've got very strong language.
How will the homeowners association be established, and what will it be? Will it be a corporation, what entity are we going to be dealing with, and what powers will it have?
A couple of things, I'm not sure that the entity itself, although it's a good question, really matters, I think I typically do it as a corporation, as a special homeowners association corporation that you can do, that is essentially tax-exempt under IRS, and then it has all of the covenants that are part of that. Often, it's just a trust, which I do believe is equally binding, so it would be, excuse me, it would be either a formal trust that would be recorded and would have all the covenants and the enforcement rights, or a corporation, so, you know, I guess I said that I usually do corporations, but the trust is equally viable and, you know, and successful in achieving the enforcement.
So you would be submitting a review for, perhaps, a document for review, and perhaps approval by this board or town council?
I wouldn't object to that, sure.
Anything else, Rick?
Not right now. Relative to the drainage, there was mention made of keeping the natural buffer, which is reasonable, but there was also mention made because nothing can be allowed to grow on top of the drainage, that in those areas, you would construct a fence to block the, not the whole 1,500 feet, I think that's unreasonable, but just where the drainage structures are, where, and as far as the drainage, honestly, I don't have any worries, because this project's 25% smaller, and you did not reduce any of the drainage, so I, and I know the area, but I'm assuming it's going to be sufficient, but there was concern about clearing that out and not having the natural buffer, so...
Right.
You agreed to block those areas with the drainage structure?
Two-part answer, which I hope is both yes and yes, because I appreciate and I agree, and I said this at the last hearing, I don't think it's appropriate or necessary for the full length, but yes, I did say, and I believe that my client, and I'm telling you publicly, I think it's a reasonable suggestion and condition, just along where the basins are. So the other thing that I would say, just to reinforce, that we believe it would be not only not necessary, but actually potentially kind of productive to have it the entire length, because as Jack pointed out to me in discussions today, you know, there could be many more trees taken down for putting in a fence, you know, so it could be kind of productive. But yes, as to the areas where they're going to be removed and can't be replaced for the basins themselves.
I, I don't have any more concerns.
Do you know what the slope of the driveways are? It's not on the plan anyway.
You don't have the slopes to the, into the garage or to the side? Usually, you have like about a .8 radius where you crown it and go seed side, but if you look at the original engineering for all of the drainage, that's what we have our catch basins for, and that's what we have the drainage for the drywells for in front of the house, and your road gets sloped to the grass to the left and to the right.
So your testimony's .08?
It's like, is it .8, Jack, on the slope?
It's not on the plan at all.
It'd be on the road profile.
Are you asking the slope of the driveway or the slope of the road surface?
The driveway itself.
Of the driveway?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we recommend 1%, because if flatter than that, sometimes they don't pave properly, and you get puddling, so it's 1%, it could be 2%.
It just doesn't indicate anywhere in here, that's why I'm asking.
It will vary from each house lot, but I wouldn't expect it, anticipating what you, where we're going with this conversation.
I was just wondering about puddling and...
I can't see it greater than 4%, and it shouldn't be less than 1%, maybe .8, which is slightly less than 1%.
Okay.
Mr. Landers-Collie?
While you're there, just quick question.
Water department and what you are installing for fire hydrants in the development itself, what is the feasibility that those hydrants in that water supply potentially to access fire hydrants for people on Percival, or to utilize that supply line for drinking water? Was that ever in your original design, that it could handle these additional potential water needs for either hydrants or for drinking water for people on Percival?
Well, the honest answer is no, I hadn't anticipated that. Intuitively, though, given the number of people on that road, the main that is proposed now would be able to adequately supply them the quantity of water, and at a reasonable pressure. Whether they had that right, that's another matter, but, yeah, there should be enough quantity and pressure to service those houses.
Thank you.
To follow up, will there be an agreement with the water department that the water main and the hydrants will become town property upon their installation and inspection and approval?
A two-part answer, my answer is I wouldn't object, I don't know what the protocol is here, and Ed, you've done a lot of subdivisions, so if you can respond.
They usually require...
I would think.
I think it's only the main.
That the water main be built, it be built at town standards, it be approved by the DPW, and then as soon as the water is turned on, it becomes town property. If it's town property, presumably, it could be utilized by anybody within reason to suppress a fire.
Same procedure, when you put the water in, you turn it over to the town, but the water still remains private, the reason why you give the town the easement and the right of way to use it is to correct any of the mains, but the water is still private, and it's where it is on the road, is... I'm sorry?
Oh, go ahead, finish.
The way that it's set up is that it's, for the problem, the town comes in, and you give them the easement for the taking care of the water, that's so they can flush it out and everything else, that's where their jurisdiction comes in. But the water line is still on the property of the homeowners and the association.
Not sure about that.
Did that mean the town does the flushing?
Yes.
Or the homeowners?
The town takes over the water system.
I thought it only took over the main by the street?
No.
Okay.
We don't, the town doesn't have anything to do with the connections to the house.
Right.
But it's, part of the main becomes part of the town's water system.
Right, mm-hmm, okay.
Is this a dead-end water main?
Looked into. Water goes down the length of the road, I think it's between house number 11 and 12. It goes where Hines Lane is, we have to connect in there, so it's looped, so when they get it, they can flush it, so it's a continuous flow of the water.
The only mention before, and I don't know if we ever, but, God, I can't, Jerry has it in his yard, the concrete lattice, you know, that you, I don't know what that stuff's called, so you could put it in the tool off or two-way spaces on the, you know, I don't know what that stuff's called, Ed.
Like grass grate, like grass grate, something you mean, that can be, have a vehicle but would be pervious?
Yeah, it's the concrete, and it's like a checkerboard, but eventually, the grass grows right through it, but, what's that stuff called?
Concrete lattice.
It just fell out of my...
One of them, I from grass grate.
Yeah, that's grass, and there's also a product called porous pavers, which is checkerboard, it's like a chessboard, and each, every other space is taken out and allowed, have fill in.
Jerry has it in his side, yeah, and after about six or seven years, you couldn't see...
Mr. Landers-Collie, since you were up there, one more quick question, please. There was an ask, to the extent feasible, all mature trees located in the vicinity of the drainage facility shall be preserved. I would hope that that would be the developers' and your hope also, is that correct?
That is correct. And a point of clarification, the way that system is designed, you can't put indigenous grasses, or you could place shallow-rooted shrubs above those systems, because there's about two and a half feet of cover above the systems.
about two and a half feet of cover above the systems.
Thank you. Public comment about the issues raised at tonight's hearing?
We haven't even done the waiver yet, you know? If I can just have one second. The button to start the slideshow, you told me the last time. Sorry. No, just to start the slideshow, like, got something loaded, but to...
Don't need that subdivision, don't need that subdivision.
That's fine. Yeah, I can do that.
It's right here, if you want to advance, that might be easier.
Okay. Yeah, no, I think I'll just, thank you. Good evening, members of the board. For the record, my name is Brian Wall. I'm an attorney, and you know I represent three direct abutters to the proposed project site. I've had the pleasure of appearing at this podium many times during the three years that this project has been under consideration. During those times I've been up here, I've suggested to the board that the project was based upon a misconception that the developer could use Percival Road as access. And we've argued that after the abutters demonstrated the developer did not have that right, that the project has essentially been redesigned on the fly, and as a result, there are fundamental flaws with the project that make it unsafe. I'm going to spare the board review of those again. You've heard me say them. The arguments are in writing. You know what they are. We maintain those arguments. Simply put, we believe that there are safety hazards with this project and that the board properly denied the project the first time around. And we suggest that the revised project has failed to address the fundamental problems with the project and failed to address the reasons why the board denied this project in the first instance. And we think the project should be denied again. Having said that, I would like to talk about a few pieces of information. I think the discussion regarding the site triangles demonstrates that even after three years, there are still questions about the level of information, particularly about certain issues that we've been talking about the whole time. So I went back and I looked at the Van Ass reports, and there are essentially two. They did a trip generation assessment where they analyzed the quantity of traffic and they concluded that the increase would not result in a material impact. They also did a site assessment, a site distance assessment. They identified the necessary site triangles, and they concluded that the requirements can be met, quote, "with specific interventions that include relocation of the existing mailboxes, removal and trimming of vegetation, and also, not to be forgotten, prompt removal of snow What's missing from the Van Ass reports are there was no explanation about the waiver that's being requested for the intersection of Rosewood and Percival. There was no opinion given by the expert as to the safety of that intersection. And the report admits that the mailbox relocation and the vegetation trimming is not only on the land of the town, but also on land that's private. That's in the report. And then, following the discussion that occurred tonight about this, I noted that the developer and the engineer said that what was staked out in the field was the road layout. And if you look at the site distance plan, the site triangles are much more extensive than the road layout. What I ask is why didn't the developer make that very clear by staking both and then maybe running some strings to answer all the questions as to where the vegetation is? But all you have to do is look at the Van Ass report, which says there is vegetation and obstructions on the land that's private. I'm not going to review the discussion before, but I respectfully disagree with the developer's attorney, Mr. Freeman, regarding the authority under 199. I do not think that that is a permit or approval, and therefore I don't think this board has the authority to require that process to be undertaken with regard to private property. And even if it could, if you look at the statute, the ordinance, there's an exception. The first section talks about removing obstructions in the whole process. Section four talks about exceptions, and it says the trunks of trees shall not be considered as obstructions under this article. So even if 199 could be used, it couldn't be used to require the removal of a tree. My question is, is why didn't the developer simply resolve this by knocking on the property owner's door and get a letter of permission? Or why didn't the developer purchase an easement from the developer, from the property owner? And again, it's not only as to the vegetation that you see today, but private property owners can plant vegetation in the site triangles. And also, I again remark back to the report of Van Ass that said, "snow is a problem too." So the developer actually needs the authority to go onto private property to remove vegetation and to plow snow when it gets deep. Thus, in summary about the Van Ass, there are significant questions that were not answered by the developer concerning safety. There were other questions that were not answered by the developer during this process as well. Whether the developer has that permission to relocate mailboxes, we've heard Mr. Montero say that he talked to the post office, but we don't have an email or a letter or anything in writing. We also don't have anything from the owners of those mailboxes. They want to know where their mail's going to be delivered. Do they, have they given permission? And if they have, where are they going to be relocated? That has not been disclosed either. And where's that bus stop going to be? And again, how is the developer going to trim or remove vegetation from private property? And how is he going to maintain the site triangles in perpetuity? Another area of lack of information that's been discussed is the stormwater. The developer did submit an extensive stormwater report for the 16-unit project that was denied. The developer subsequently revised the project by reducing it to 12 units and by reconfiguring the road. And there's been a simple conversation that says, "Oh, well, the stormwater report was for 16 units and therefore we're reducing it to 12. We don't need to submit a new one." But I look carefully at the plans, and what I saw, and I think this is somewhat of a generalization because I'm not an architect, I didn't have the ability to take it off the plan, and I went to law school because I'm not good at math. But the bottom line is, what I saw was that the initial application proposed eight three-bedroom ranches and eight three-bedroom capes. The ranches had footprints of 47 by 24, which adds up to 1,128 square feet per house. The capes were 50 by 28 or 1,400. When you do the math, it comes out to 20,724 square feet of footprint. The new application is for 12 three-bedroom ranches with footprints that are 58 by 38 or 2,204 square feet, which adds up to 26,448 feet, which is 5,720 foot for more. And furthermore, the road curvature adds length to the road, which therefore adds more impervious material. And a simple calculation shows that there's 27% more lot coverage on the new project than the last project, but the stormwater report has not been updated. And that means that these drainage basins that are inside the 20-foot vegetated buffer that we've been told about could be inadequate. It could result in flooding, to my clients, and we're very concerned about that. And we're concerned that after three years of this project, there are still fundamental safety questions. So in summary, we again suggest the project should be denied for fundamental flaws and for lack of information. Furthermore, in the event the board is inclined to approve this project, without waiver of our arguments and without prejudice to our arguments, without conceding anything, we did submit some proposed conditions that we would ask the board to look at when you're developing. Thank you. That's my presentation.
Other public comment? Simple bag. Recusing the gentleman here coming up to the podium, sir. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, thank you. I'm not used to these. Here we go. Thank you. Okay, hi, I'm Robert Cole. I live at 197 Percival Road. I am the immediate abutter to the north of this development. As you can see, I highlighted my lot there. You can see the little pork chop that comes out right into the corner of Trotting Park Road, and there's been a lot of talk about sightlines. And they keep looking south with all these pictures, and the staking and all that work was to the south of the intersection. There's been no discussion of the north of the intersection. So I'm going to take you guys through a certified plot plan that I had done on September 11th to show clearly that there are more trees on my private property that about the sightlines that are within the site triangle, and that many of these mailboxes, which they claim are within the public roadway, are actually on my property and can't just be moved out of the public roadway. So I'll be showing you a little bit more. First of all, I want to refer to that same VAI report where they mentioned that the available lines of sight, the relocation of mailboxes, intersection and selective trimming, removal of trees, vegetation located within the site triangle areas. That's a condition of, that their own engineers in the VAI report mandated that they have to remove these trees, they have to remove the mailboxes, right? So here's what we're looking at. This is the corner in question. There's the mailboxes. This is the north side as you come out of Percival Road onto Trotting Park. You see that private property sign. You see those trees to the right, pretty obstructed, which wouldn't be a problem if we could just make it all go away, right? If we could just say to me, "Hey, you have to remove those." Unfortunately, in...
Mind if I go back to that picture?
Yeah, yeah, of course, sir. Right here.
Now, that's really not a very good representation of what we're dealing with. You should have it up to where the car would stop and park when it looked up the road. You're further up Percival Road and...
I've got a lot more for you.
That's not a good representation.
Okay.
I hope you have more, because that's not much.
I certainly do. Thank you, Mr. Fenner. So regarding section 199, as the attorney pointed out, the exception include trunks of trees. Section 199.2 also says that in order to get me in this case to remove any of those things, there would have to be the agreement of the town engineer and the chief of police jointly to determine that this view is obstructed. There's been, there is nothing in your records that say that there's a letter from the chief of police or from the town engineer that they agreed jointly that this obstruction, that this view is obstructed. So there's nothing in your records, and I went through them pretty carefully, that says that's the case. Even if it was the case and there was such a letter, we'd have to go to the select board. There'd be a hearing, and at some point they'd have to compel me to remove these things. So here is the survey in progress. As you can see, I had it spent considerable expense to have this done. You can see that that spray painted point is in the middle of the intersection, and that's them staking back through the trees to determine where the roadway ends and my property begins. Here's a result. This is the stamp survey by Alpha on 9/11. And I'm going to show you just the blow-up of the area in question. And as you can see here, there are four trees right in, on my private property that are in the sightlines. I'm going to show you a picture for reference. There's the green tree, the blue flag tree, the red flag tree, and the private property sign, all of which are in, on my property, not in the roadway, and are in, right in the middle of the sightline. You can, and I'll show you a picture of that from the road. Furthermore, there's eight mailboxes. Four are in the public roadway, eight are on my private property. And they have been set there by my surveyor. I made him put the actual mailboxes and the actual trees on this plan, on this blow-up, because I didn't want there to be any more confusion about the north side of this project. For reference to what I'm referring to, there's the private property tree, there's the red tree, there's the blue tree, and there's the green tree. As you can see, those all lie within my property. Here's the surveyor putting in the stake behind mailbox 181. As you can see, there's four to the left, the further eight are to the right. That means that the eight to the right are within my property and not within the public roadway. Here is, here is more about 199.2, 199.4, but I guess the point being from that is that I can't be compelled to remove those trees, and those mailboxes cannot, the mailboxes can be moved if somebody would talk to the postmaster. But again, we still have nothing in the public record that says that he's even been talked to. We can believe people's words, but I would love to see a letter from the postmaster, and I'd love to get some clearer guidance on how that all works, because I'm one of the people with the mailboxes. I want to know where my mail's going to be delivered. The trees are pretty set in stone. It's right there in 199, 199.4 exceptions highlighted, the trunks of trees. So even if, even if my tree was in the roadway, the town could not compel me to remove it. They could compel me to trim the tree, but not the trunk. And so this also applies to that tree on the south of the roadway that Mr. Fenner duly pointed out. If that, if that abutter, if that abutter doesn't want that tree cut down, there's nothing the town can do to compel him to do so. Finally, this is what it looks like when a car is pulling out into that intersection and looking to the right. To your point, Mr. Fenner, and thank you for asking for this. I had this picture specifically. That's a Prius. Most Sedans are about that height. If you're looking out the right side window, a car's coming at the other direction, pretty tough to see anything down that road. And even if you were to pull out, as you can see, we trimmed back, we did trim back the vegetation from the road. This is the original photo. That's from before the vegetation was trimmed back, but it was trimmed back pretty drastically recently. Here's, I'm going to show you a more recent picture to give you an idea of what the sightlines look like now. If you, with your, do you have patience for me to find that picture? Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I'm over time here. Any questions so far while I look for this? No. Feel free to interrupt me. I do have a tendency to ramble, as my friends often say. Hold on one second. Okay, so here are the most recent photos of the intersection. So there are the mailboxes, and you can see this has all been trimmed back now. It doesn't do us much good, though, right? This has been trimmed back. This is as far as the town can trim it back, and they, the town came through and did the trimming. God bless them, thank you, I didn't have to do it. But as you can see, if a car were to come out here to where my, to where my cursor is, you got the four mailboxes you could remove, but there's still a major obstruction to the sightline. And this is where the trim, this is from where a car would be pulling up to the corner, and you can't see really anything to the right, not just because of my trees, but the mailboxes, et cetera, et cetera. So I hope this lends a little bit more clarity to the questions around the north side of the road. I didn't see anything about my side of the road in their presentation tonight.
Well, I think that's because the majority of the concerning traffic is coming from the south. That is the more important sightline. Traffic that's coming from the north is going to be across the road, so you have more. I mean, it's...
So it's not, not a concern?
Oh, it's a concern, but the mailboxes are the major concern.
You don't think...
And, and the real concern is, is the traffic coming from the south up the road. And the majority of the accidents that happen on that road that I've witnessed have been from cars coming south to north. The one a couple of weeks ago was coming south to north. The head-on that I witnessed was...
That was, that was a humdinger, too.
And, I mean, that is the majority. I mean, sure, I'd like the whole thing to be clear-cut, but, you know, that's up to you. But it's, the major concern is, at least in my case, and I'm very familiar with the area, is what's coming from the south.
I guess a hypothetical, that, the way that you referenced it was it's a pork chop in that portion of your property. Do you have any future use up in that quadrant of your property, or is it... Or is it... It's kind of dead-ended at that portion?
We've only been here a couple of years, and it's taken us that long just to pull our... You know, the area where we live into shape.
If you've done seven years, you'll be lucky.
I mean, it's hard here, man. The Cape Rose grows back quick. But yeah, I mean, whether or not I have plans to build on it or anything like that, I think I reserve the right to use it the way I would hope to in the future. And I think we reserve the right to not have somebody come onto our land and tell us what to do with it. That is as American as life, liberty, and property, right? So...
Or said another way, is there potential that you could have a discussion with the developer that could have a better outcome than potentially what's been spoken?
That keeps coming up. And again, like, for two years, the developer hasn't spoken to me or offered anything to any of the other abutters. There hasn't been any of those discussions. And I think, having been on the other side of many of these hearings, in my experience, the first thing you do is go out to the neighbors. The first thing you do is go around to the community and talk to them, say, here's what I'm trying to do. What's your feedback? How do we do this? We're about to bring 30, 40 new residents into your neighborhood. How do we do this in a way that is copacetic with how you guys live? How do we make this right for you? That should have been the first discussion. And instead, we're three years later, and that hasn't happened at all. And I'm spending, you know, thousands of dollars on surveys just to show you something that the developer should have had in the initial proposal.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Other policy?
Just briefly, Pat Harris, 181 Percival Road. There's a couple of things that are minor in comparison to safety and health, stormwater, traffic. The discussions about the fence and the 22-foot-wide corridor that is supposed to be naturally vegetated, this is a wildlife corridor, and that had some appeal. But then we find out that they're actually putting these 180-foot-long detention facilities that will require them to clear at least half of the 22-foot-wide vegetated strip. So we have been asking, in lieu of our expectation of the natural vegetation being preserved in that 22-foot-wide corridor, that they put up a fence the length of the property that will provide us that privacy. One of those detention basins, and this is very personal, is right next to my house. And I'm going to see right through to the development, which is not what they were suggesting initially. So I'd ask that there be that condition required. They're talking about putting a fence only at the location of the detention basin, but they're talking about putting it my side of the detention basin rather than their side. And again, if they're talking about providing some privacy to me, having a 180-foot-long stockade fence, and then vegetation, then another 180-foot-long fence, it's going to have a very negative impact on the aesthetics of our road, which is a very natural environment. So I would ask you to think about that hard, long and hard. And the other thing that I saw being discussed previously was a lot of discussion about the town layout, but not really emphasizing the interrelationship of the town layout and the line of the site triangle, particularly on the southbound side. We can see very clearly from the plans that were submitted that the bush that Mark has been talking about exists, and its base is on the landowner's side. But if you look further at the triangle, that's a very large swath of Salzman's property. And we've proposed a condition that requires them to get, you know, permanent easements for those lines of sight. Otherwise, this will only be good for a month or two. I mean, there's been some vegetation cut by the town along the layout, but they're not going to maintain that. They can't. There's too much along the roads in town for them to be paying particular attention to this property. But even more importantly, as Mark has pointed out, that big shrub, you can't see past either coming north or driving south. Thank you.
Ma'am?
Hi, I'm Jen Scale. I live at 6-Horness Drive, and I own 10-Horness Drive. And I'm one of the abutters that have, like, dealt with the repercussions from the developer chasing us with the kids, calling the police on us, putting stakes in our sand pit, et cetera. I've written in all my letters. He has not tried to talk to one of us abutters, and I believe every abutter of this project, except for one, is against this project due to the safety. We all can agree that that intersection is a safety issue, right? Like, you guys have all said that, right now, it's a safety issue. But I've lived there. I've lived at my house for 47 years... Forty-five years, I'm 47 years old. That has always been a safety issue coming out of Percival. There's been accidents there, tractors have been tipped over, buses have been hit, cars have been hit, cars have flipped over, poles have been down numerous times. Mr. Santos's fence has probably been knocked down 10 times in three years. Mr. Bowers' rock wall has been knocked over at least six times in the past three or four years. There's not going to be any... I mean, everything that I've heard, like I said, I was at home, and I'm like, you know what? I'm going to go there, because every time I hear this developer say, oh, well, we can just move the mailboxes, I believe. Well, you can't believe, you can't think, you can't predict. You need to have facts. You need to have the paper from the fire department saying, you can have this double road that you're not supposed to have in town because it's not safe. You need to have a letter from the postmaster saying, oh, we're going to take away all your mailboxes that you all pay taxes for. You need to have a clear plot plan of your stamped, certified, signed plot plan. I'm telling you that I had my land surveyed. I don't have the certified plot plan, but I have it staked out from Cape and Islands Engineering. And they're at least 10 feet off. And that's just my little portion. My aunt had hers done, too. It's just, like, there's too much up in the air. How can you say, oh, this is a go project? You can't. There's nothing... We don't even know where the hell the fire hydrants are going. Or you're proposing three-story buildings, but you have a parking space for one and a half cars. What if somebody has a Yukon? Where are they parking it? Because they're not going to fit in your spot. Nothing makes sense. You went from 16 houses to 12. You haven't changed anything. We haven't seen any new plans. I just... Sorry, I'm a little emotional about it, because I've had enough. Like, I'm sick of the bullying, I'm sick of the crap, I'm sick of the I think, I believe. Don't think or believe. Show us the concrete. Show us what you own. Show us what you're going to do and where it's going to go. Sorry, that's my speech. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I actually... I'm Corinne Swain. I live at 149 Percival. I'm directly across the street from this project. I actually submitted a letter, but it didn't get read because I think I neglected to say it needed to be read. So I just want to make sure that we're heard tonight. So I'm just going to read what I originally submitted tonight. My name is Corinne Swain. I live at 149 Percival Road. I'm a direct abutter to this project. I have written several letters in regards to not supporting this project. When my husband and I purchased this property back in 2011, we were told this lot in front of us was unbuildable. Fast forward to today, we are now looking at a 40B project that will allow for 12 houses. This was something we did not think we would have to be concerned with, but we understand the need for affordable housing. This project creates concern for safety of the neighbors and the community. Attorney Wall stated that it is your responsibility as the board to weigh out whether the housing concerns are greater than the local concerns. Three affordable houses, 12 houses in total, do not outweigh the concerns of all the surrounding neighbors. The community and everyone else traveling down Trotting Park, that number well exceeds 12 families that would be provided the housing. There are now... There are... I'm sorry. This is why I write letters, because I don't speak well publicly. There are a few factors that have been part of the safety concern. The road design that Mr. Montero has created is extremely dangerous. When exiting Percival Road heading to Trotting Park, you come around a corner that almost immediately meets the driveway to Rosewood Estates. Ironically, this morning, this was another morning, my husband was coming around the corner and almost hit Mr. Montero and his business partner as they stood at the opening of Rosewood Estates. My husband was unable to see him. The mailboxes are another issue. Mr. Montero will have 12 mailboxes on his property at each house. That has nothing to do with our existing 13 mailboxes that are at the end of Percival Road, two of which that belong to homeowners on Trotting Park Road. Mr. Finneran is wrong here. The mailman will not come down our road, it was asked before, and deliver to each individual house. There is a portion of the road that is gravelled and has many potholes, and this portion is just after Mr. Montero's driveway. So that's not going to be corrected. After rain, snow, and snow plowing, this road becomes more difficult to pass through. That's why the mailboxes are where they are. Mr. Finneran appears to believe this problem will be solved by moving the mailboxes, but where to? Did the postmaster say they will now come down Percival Road to deliver to each individual houses when they already refused to do so before? What about the two mailboxes that will belong to the people on Trotting Park on the opposing side of the road? I feel like there are a lot of statements and assumptions being made without anything in writing for three years now. I mean, I feel like there's a reason why there's nothing being provided in writing. Mr. Freeman may not believe it's his client's responsibility to deal with the other mailboxes, but it absolutely is if he's trying to convince the board that this development will be safe for everybody. Along with this letter, I included pictures. I don't know if you got the pictures. They were when I was exiting, and the mailbox truck was there. This happens quite frequently, because I go... I exit the same time each day. I'm going to pick up my sixth-grade daughter, and at that time, the post office delivery guy is there. And at that time, there are two schools being dropped off for Lawrence School and High School. Those that will be... So, let me see. I have to slowly inch around the mail truck, and as I was doing so, someone's coming from the left, and they saw me first, thankfully, because they're beeping their horn to let me know that they're coming as I'm looking to the right, trying to get around the mailbox, the post office man. My next concern, as this project gets approved, this really hasn't been talked about, how is the traffic going to be managed on Percival Road? I mean, you've all been down it. It's one-way traveling. How is the traffic going to be managed on Percival Road? It's a narrow road allowing one car only to pass at a time. Mr. Montero can say this won't be a problem for the residents from his development because they're not going to be using that end of the road, but who's to say that? Just another statement being made with no factual evidence. How can you guarantee that they won't be using that road as a cutthroat? Lastly, I made a comment, but it was from Mr. Pichucci. He's not here, so I'll leave that one out. I have a couple of requests that I think we deserve. A fence requested the entire length of Percival, not just by the drainage system, in addition to the natural border. I would also like this fence installed prior to construction. Mr. Montero has made no effort to work with us or the neighbors and has been threatening and manner. This fence, I feel like, will alleviate some of this disruption and the threatening behavior, and I think we deserve that. I would also like it noted as a stipulation that if this project gets approved, the construction workers cannot enter through Sandwich Road to go to his project. You know, that's going to be a lot of pulling over to get through. That's unacceptable. And this homeowners association, I would also like that noted that Percival Road is a private road, and they are to exit through Trotting Park and not use the remainder of Percival Road as a cutthroat. And that's everything. Thank you.
My name is Katrina Nevin. I live at 179 Trotting Park Road. The back portion of my property abuts Percival, or the Gon Salves properties. A couple of observations. I'm new to town, moved here in 2020. This whole process has been going on as long as I've been here. I haven't been involved until tonight, but I've spoken to a lot of people in the neighborhood, not just on Percival, and nobody is gung ho about this. Everybody agrees that there are other, possibly better, easier places to put such a thing. There's been a lot of points made about how this is not an easy or even accurate plan to put into place. And I've just observed that this team is obsequious, pushy, condescending. They talked through many of the last few people who spoke as if they didn't matter. A lot of people have testified that they've been aggressive. And I feel like it's a little embarrassing that you all are sort of taking this lying down, is what it looks like. I mean, I'm from Martha's Vineyard, maybe I'm spoiled. We have a little bit of a different way of processing housing developments, perhaps, but it's disconcerting to watch you all saying, oh, I don't want to stop this, Mr. Finneran. I'm not trying to be rude, but it's disconcerting to see public service officials disregarding, seemingly, all of... Not disregarding, but not taking on board a lot of people in the neighborhood's needs and desires. Okay, so the thing I came to talk about is turtles. Yes, I'm here for that. Okay. The proposed 40B development stands on land that is unfortunately located in the midst of prime winter habitat for hibernating eastern box turtles. The turtles need access to vernal ponds and wetlands, such as the moist, low vernal ponds that lie on the west side of Trotting Park Road opposite Percival. They prefer to live in mixed deciduous forests with pine and oak, with lots of brush cover, rotten fallen logs, plenty of leaf litter to burrow into, just like the proposed building site. They like to be in forest adjacent to open fields, which is exactly the habitat that exists to the south and north of the proposed development, in the agriculturally zoned fields. In late autumn, after the first frost, the turtles bury themselves in the leaf litter just under the soil surface, and during the winter, they may go slightly deeper, but they're pretty close to the surface. If this proposed 40B was to break ground during cold weather, for example, it is very likely that hibernating turtles would be killed by machinery. Eastern box turtles are a species of special concern under the Massachusetts Endangered Species Act. Killing or harassing these turtles is illegal. In the August 24 hearing, the attorney referenced... The developer... I'm sorry. The attorney for the developer stated that, quote, "In reference to your wildlife corridor and coastal pond overlay district, we believe that either we are exempt or we meet the standards." He referenced a letter sent on June 8, 2023 detailing, quote, "That on the wildlife corridor, your peer reviewer, your peer reviewer, agrees that really that should be inapplicable. There's just no endangered species or habitat," unquote. This is just simply not true. In the last month alone, there have been multiple sightings of critically endangered eastern box turtles in the fields and woods abutting Percival Road on both sides. These turtles have been seen crossing the same properties for many years, as attested by multiple property owners on Trotting Park and Percival Road. Pat Stone at number 163 and Ron Stone at number 113 Trotting Park, and Suzie and Don Burnett at number 169 Trotting Park have seen the same turtles crossing their fields every year, so they are there.
I'm going to be with her on my side, too, but behind me.
Sorry.
Excuse me, for a moment. Thank you. I've been giving the neighbors in all of these hearings great latitude to offer comments. The last thing I want to do is stifle anyone to be heard. The instruction that I gave tonight, however, was to limit comments concerning the issues specifically raised this evening, which had to do with traffic, which had to do with view easements and so on. The majority of the comments I've heard from people from the abutters have been in there. This is completely off point. Your two minutes has been up.
Okay. I have talked to the people at the Conservation Agency of Massachusetts, because I understand the town has no jurisdiction...
You're no longer recognized. We don't have jurisdiction over that, ma'am.
I know. So I will be speaking with the state.
Thank you. Other public comments to those issues?
Hello, I'm Jessica Kowal. You guys have heard me before. I think that you guys should decline this plan. The last time that we were here, it was clearly stated that these guys were supposed to go to the post office and get a clear pan. They were supposed to go to the fire department and have a clear plan. That we have no actual documentation. Everything is hearsay. I apologize, but your logic is downright insulting, because it's a different street. You are talking about creating a brand-new neighborhood in between our neighborhood, street, Percival, and Trotting Park. And I would just like to be noted that everything that's talked about tonight is just Trotting Park and Percival, not the rest of Percival, which is a lot of houses and a lot of families. And in the time that this has been going on, two more houses have been built on Percival. I just... I think that these guys had plenty of time to come with solid plans to make everyone feel good about this project, and that has yet to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Freeman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll try to be brief, and I don't want to go over things in a redundant way. I would just say that I'll let you folks be the judge as to whether, despite what Mr. Wall and some speakers have said, whether or not there's really been significant changes since the initial proposal that was denied. I'll let the record speak for itself. As to stormwater, I repeat what I said earlier. The peer reviewer was satisfied. There has been an update. I don't know if it was submitted to this board, but Mr. Holly, Mr. Jack Collielander submitted the plan, the updated information on the stormwater for the smaller project to engineering. Engineering hasn't submitted anything with any objections. So again, the peer review says it all, and there's been no objection from engineers. Same with the fire department. They've gone over the plan. I can't control whether they send something in. There has been a lot of time, there's been no objections. So I think it's appropriate for you to draw conclusions that those concerns have been addressed properly by the applicant. Again, on the mailboxes, I'll let the record speak for itself. You know, the mailboxes that are of concern are in the public way. The only other thing I'd like to do, and I commend Mr. Wall for submitting a few proposed conditions, and he did send them to me, but only a couple of days ago, and you know, that's not, I'm not in any way saying that he wasn't courteous to send them. He was, but I just haven't had time to send anything in writing. Most of them have been addressed, but I'll just quickly go through them for your edification. His proposal, number one, is condition number one. We've already discussed that. He goes on about the site distances, the triangles and all of that. We've already discussed that, so I don't think what he says is necessary, but we've already discussed possible conditions. Number two, he's basically calling for the stockade fence all along the entire Percival, and we've already discussed that as well, so we don't agree with that. The third one is really about the landscaping plan, and a lot of it, again, we've discussed. He's really saying that there should be a condition that the developer shall landscape the area in accordance with the landscape plan and maintain it in perpetuity. It would be the HOA that does it in perpetuity, but that's certainly fine. We also discussed his next point. To the extent feasible, all mature trees located in the vicinity of the drainage facility shall be preserved, and we discuss that. That's logical. The final thing is that installation of the stormwater detention facilities be overseen by DPW. That's fine. And then he says, however, which is not done in 40Bs, it just doesn't work, and shall be completed prior to the issuance of a building permit for any residential dwelling. So certainly before certificates of occupancy, but the buildings on most projects, including 40Bs, doesn't have to wait the completion of the stormwater, cause big delay and extra money, and it's for no purpose. The next one is a suggestion that at the applicant's expense, a site inspector will be designated as opposed to relying on the town engineer. Certainly, I leave that to your judgment, but I don't think that's necessary. The town engineer and other department folks routinely inspect projects, so I don't think that that's necessary. Our stormwater must be maintained, contained, and managed on-site. I'm told that that's what we're doing, so that would be okay. Again, not necessary, because if you approve the plans, it's going to include the fact of necessity and as a matter of law that we build the project according to the plans. But he says, as shown on the utility and lighting plan, I won't quote the entire title, our lighting shall be dark sky compliant, and that's fine. And then the final point really talks about water installation and all, and it's a little complicated. I won't waste time on it, but I would say that condition isn't necessary. What's efficient is, as with other items I just stated, that the water system shall be installed, as shown on the plans, and in compliance with the department, water department's technical regulations, which I stated at the very beginning in our application. So really, that's all that I would say, and you know, I understand neighbors' objections. I don't think, again, honestly, that it's fair to characterize this submission, the new submission, as defective. It responds to all of the legitimate concerns. It's ultimately for you folks, I respect, to draw your conclusions about it, but I would hope that you would find that now, with the changes that have been made and with appropriate conditions, it would be helpful to the town, beneficial to approve the project, get a few more affordable houses for homeowners, for families, and to approve the project with appropriate conditions. Thanks.
For ten seconds.
Certainly.
A matter of information. I don't have my whole file here because it's pretty weighty, but my recollection is on the first time, this was before the board, the peer reviewed deferred to the stormwater expert and did not independently refer, review the stormwater report. And it's also my recollection that it happened the second time, that the Beal and Thomas deferred to the expert and did not provide peer review. So my argument from earlier is that by my calculation, lot coverage went up by 27% and the report has not been updated or reviewed. And the second very minor point, I shouldn't say minor, it's a very important point, but very quick point, is the email that you have from the fire department that says that the road is okay has no reference to a plan, so we have no idea what the fire department is saying they approved. Thank you.
Frank.
Tonight, we had several exhibits up on the screen, and Mr. Kowal put one up, and you put one up, Mr. Wall. Do we have those on record?
I can give the...
Well, if you put them up on the screen, they have to be on the record here.
Did you email it in? I'm happy to, I emailed it in late this afternoon. I'm happy to...
Well, I haven't seen it, so if you mailed it in late afternoon, it didn't make...
So do you need the file? How do you want me to give you the files? Do you happen to do that right now?
Well, we'll defer to the administrator as to how you're going to do that.
It's in the file, Norine. So procedurally through you, Norine, motion to close will trigger what?
Timeline.
Timeline.
If I may, a couple of comments. The drainage design is rather extensive, complex, and well-thought-out. It was reviewed by two peer engineers, and they were satisfied with the submission. I think that has to be stated. The second is, when looking at the photographs regarding the site distances, you need to understand, we have a very exact standard. We have to place the human eye or the driver's eye 14 and a half feet from the edge of the pavement, the traveled way. When you think about it, that's the, you know, four or five feet from the edge of the road to the car and from the front of the car to the driver's position is another seven or eight feet. So when you look at those photographs, you have to think, is the eye 14 feet from the edge of the pavement? I think the photographs that were presented are misleading in that regard, that is, photographs presented by the neighbors were a little misleading. And lastly, we didn't place the mailboxes where they are. Two-thirds of those mailboxes are on someone else's property, which I assume his or hers has sent. Those are my comments.
Yeah, I'd just like to respond to a couple of comments that were made. If the mailboxes are in the road layout, we do have the authority to have them moved. I mean, they can simply move to the other end of the stack of mailboxes, or they could be moved around the corner potentially, because the mail truck is going to turn onto Percival Rosewood Lane, and it's going to go in there, so most probably that does allow those things to be moved backwards. They'd be safer for everyone. As far as taking things lying down, we get paid nothing, and I put 15 hours into this some weeks, and I look at everything, and I take nothing lying down. And as far as the fire department, there are letters in the file from the fire department, one submitted in the last few days, so that information is incorrect. And also, this thing has gone to court, it's been remanded back to us. All we have the power to do is to condition this thing and make it as safe and the best project possible. As far as us rejecting it, went back to court, it would just come back. I mean...
So do it so the plans match, so that we have some...
Yeah. I don't see much here that convinces me to deny this project. I'm sorry. We'll condition it and make it as safe as possible. Some 40Bs, well, the limit for 40Bs is six units an acre. You're talking about 2.34 units an acre, and this housing is very much needed, whether it's two-bedroom or three-bedroom. And I mean, the affordable houses are needed just as much as the nine other houses are needed. And we really don't have the information or the ability to deny this.
You don't have the information to approve it? Nothing?
Norine, through you, the issue about the stormwater, I am curious if someone could pull that up while we entertain some questions and have some discussion as to whether or not, what are exactly our peer engineer in review stated regarding the proposed stormwater management?
Give me a plan.
Correct. If that could be just, if you start looking at, we're going to have some discussion.
Answer the question, what's the timeline here?
Closing the hearing will trigger, requires a 30 days before a decision is rendered, correct? I voted on 40, excuse me.
Forty days to file a written decision. If you close today.
So I guess the discussion we only have is, do we have enough information or...
Well, we've got quite a bit of information. I don't know what we're going to get in the way of more information. I think we've heard from everybody several times. We've got a lot of information to go through. But one of the things about this hearing is it came to us, it was presented to us as if there had been a mediated settlement somewhere, where in fact, it's quite clear from the hearings that we've been having for the last couple of months that there really was no mediated settlement. The only settlement was that they could come back and ask for it all over again. So we're looking at this from scratch, the way I consider it. One other point, there was a point made by Mr. Wall and Mr. Kowal about the exception to section 199 of the Code of Falmouth, which exempts the trunks of trees as obstructions. Well, I kind of find that interesting. It just says the trunks of trees. It doesn't apply to limbs. So I think the, you could cut all the limbs off up to 12 or 15 feet and clear the whole area out as a possible solution, but I just make that as a point.
Who's going to maintain that?
Well, one of the things we have to do is figure, if that's the condition, it has to be maintained.
Scott?
I think, again, from Mr. Wall's most recent documentation, it seems as though that the developer, outside of a fence and item two, that they would step up to the plate and do everything that Mr. Wall had pretty much outlined, so I guess we should just move to potentially closing the hearing, having our discussions and condition as much as we can to Mr. Finneran's point, from my perspective, and move forward. Whether that's an approval or denial, I don't know, but I'm just stating.
Suzanne?
I still have a real problem with the relationship the developer and the butters are having. We try to encourage people when they're going into a neighborhood to meet with the people. He's just like, call the town. What about the mailboxes? Well, just call the town. That's what I just got. Call the town. I'm concerned about that. I mean, I wouldn't want someone just come and yank in my mailbox out tomorrow, and I think it's six of them, if I'm correct, that are on someone else's property. Nothing's been done about it. It's on, to me, it's on the developer. He's the one that wants to change this whole intersection around. It's his job to go and figure out what's going to happen. I've asked him every hearing, what's going on with the post office? I have asked every hearing. Eh, I think they said, I think I can. Tonight, I asked again, are you having mailboxes? Yeah, but I can do this, I can do that. Well, did you actually pick? Yeah, I picked. It's just very, it's just too fluid for me. I want something writing from the post office. I want the neighbors to not have to wonder, where's my mail going to come? During construction even, what's going to happen during construction with their mail? That's important to a lot of people, the mail. I guess they could get boxes or something for the construction. I also agree with someone that said that the construction trucks should not use Percival during construction at all. I think the road's in tough shape as it is. It'll make it far worse. I don't even know due to anything under the roads, like water lines or whatever. I...
There's no water lines.
There's no water lines under it?
All wells.
Is it all wells? That was another thing that one of the...
It's not. Mr. Kowal.
Time out, I'm talking. Another thing that one of the peer review people wrote, that there are no wells shown on any plans. That was something, see, I didn't know. There was all wells up there because they're not on the plans anywhere.
A lot of wells, anyway. I know because I've worked on that.
I just have a problem with the relationship, and it's sad that it got to this point because it's probably broken. I don't know if it is, but it's just sad, and I feel bad for everybody involved. I'm having a hard time on how I'm voting, totally.
My safety concern is about the site, the view sites, and I'm just, after the testimony of tonight, as well as reviewing the report, if those shrubs can't be removed and the view easements cannot be improved, that is, for me, is an overriding safety issue. There's going to be an increase in traffic. If those can be addressed, then this is just about conditioning.
But if we close, we don't know.
Well, we condition it, and if the trees aren't removed, and I mean, they can negotiate, I mean, buy them a couple of trees in the back.
It should have already been done.
I understand that, and we should have had the survey, but we didn't.
The negotiation should have happened with the gentleman that owns on both sides, north and south. Should have been negotiated already.
The second thing that I just want to make sure is, I want to make sure that our peer engineer has taken into account that the drainage is acceptable based on the adjusted lot coverages that were something that have been submitted.
I agree on that.
I understand. I just want to make sure that, I'm not an engineer, and I want our peer engineer to say, yep, they're right, so this is fine, and this is not going to be an issue. Anything else?
I think that we can condition our way through this, and if the conditions aren't met, you have to come back. I mean, how we write it up. Including no use of Percival Road.
That's a reasonable condition as well. I mean, and it's a, you know, it's their ask, and I think it's more than reasonable.
What do you mean, no use of Percival Road?
The construction trucks or whoever.
Coming off Sandwich Road.
Coming off Sandwich Road and down Percival. It's a private road. They mentioned it, and I think that's a condition we can put in.
I don't even think you could take the big trucks. I mean...
Not a lot of them.
Not a lot of them, that's right.
And I, wow, you know, I mean, we're going to have a list of conditions here if we go forward that have to be met, and if they're not, we have the ability to pull the plug, right?
Well, we still have to vote to approve or deny.
Yeah.
And then we have to vote each one of the individual conditions.
Yeah. But if they aren't met...
Triggers, could trigger an appeal or referral hack.
Well, we have the responsibility to come up with a decision that protects the town's interests and the neighborhood's interests, so if it requires us to put a condition on that is a goal that they must meet before they can take, go to step two, and I think we do that.
It's just, how do we do that?
Well, we'll have to, it can be done. It can be done, but there's a frustration here that I've had for a couple of weeks now that the presentation of this case has really been lacking a little bit in terms of, I would think the developer would have gone out and solved many of these problems and come back and reported to us good news, but we don't seem to get it.
Exactly. So we can demand it through conditions. Correct?
We've been hinting all along.
Yeah, I mean, other than that, we're going to keep coming back.
Or it could be a no for safety reasons. Where do we go from here? You suggesting, Madam Zoning Administrator, you want us to close, or is there additional?
I mean, I think, other than if you want further information, you know, I guess you would have an option at this point in time to either condition or direct the developer to negotiate with the Butters on the matters that remain open. So either they're gonna talk, and they're gonna come to a resolution, or you have to condition and hope that that will be met.
In terms of directing for negotiation, the other thing is, I'd like to know, I'd like an opinion from Town Council about the issue of the bylaw for obstruction about trees, about whether or not that is something we can condition, whether it's something it's going to have to go through with the letter, with the town planner, and the police chief, then in front of the Board of Selectmen. I just want to answer that. I want to know, can they actually clear these trees out to approve the view lines? And then, I don't think it's unreasonable to ask for some type of written documentation from the post office about the mailboxes, and to instruct them, yeah, try to resolve these view easements with the one or two trees that are not in the town right of way.
And on private property. And any...
Yes. You know, the looking south is my great concern. Looking north, the cars are coming from the other side of the road, they can shoot that much more vision. And I've never seen an accident coming that way, it's always been, oh, in the other. So do we continue, do we continue, is that what you're saying, until we get guidance back from Town Council?
Sooner, I mean, we're gonna have to make some hard decisions sooner or later, but I mean, those seems to, I mean, are there other overriding concerns?
If you're gonna get new information in, I don't see how you can really close it, because everybody has a right to comment on it.
And there's also, the Police Department has a new road safety program the chief spoke about at the Falmouth Heights Maravista Association. And if 70% of the residents from any street complain, sign a letter, complain, or petition, they will send their team to review the points of concern, and perhaps apply more signage, change the speed limits. And I know this is possible, because I, along with a group of others, kept the no truck signs put on either side of Trotting Black Road, because the tractor trailers towed out there, it was a real issue. But, you know, that's above and beyond and after. Again, my greatest concern is the trees and the safety to itself. You know, whether we condition it and let Eddie and the homeowner negotiate, or we continue. I'm sure continuing would probably make the Butters happier. Not that they enjoy coming here.
Not that fun.
Counsel, I haven't forgot you, Mrs. Newman.
I'm sorry, I probably don't like you at this moment, but I have a clarifying question. If you can't...
You gotta go to the podium, so it's recorded. Thank you.
I just heard a lot of people saying, "Why are we here?" And I wanted to know, you can't vote against this? Is that what you were saying, that you actually don't have the power to stop this?
We do, but I mean, I don't think we have the ammunition. And we just get turned down.
Very difficult, and I'm not gonna, for any 40B to be denied by a municipality.
That's what I keep hearing.
And I don't want to get into how and why. It has to be safe, health and safety, and they're almost always overruled by an appeals court.
Especially the second time around.
So, Counsel, you had a question you wanted to address?
Couple of things. I will just state very candidly and honestly, I really don't think that it should be continued. I think you should close it. And I have no problem with you getting advice or an opinion from Town Council about that bylaw, but I don't think that needs to be done only when the hearing is open, and please don't get upset, but I would say, we've been discussing that bylaw for weeks, and frankly, months. And I do have to defend my client, and I have to say honestly what's appropriate, and I think you run a great hearing. But, you know, if you continue the hearing for that purpose, I just don't think that's fair. You've had many, many opportunities to ask counsel. But I think more importantly is, I have no objection to it, whether you think it has to come in on the record. I would stipulate that that one item alone could come in, and no comment on it, because the hearing would be closed except for that submission. But I really don't think that it needs to be coming in as an exhibit. You know, when you close the hearing and then you start deliberating, it's common practice that you talk to your town attorney, you get advice about possible conditions. And in the case of a condition on the site distances, it would be appropriate to ask your attorney, and that the attorney could still give you the benefit of his or her advice, depending on whom within the office gives that opinion to you. So again, I don't object to you wanting to do that, I just don't think that it's necessary or, again, candidly appropriate to not close the hearing. So I think you can achieve what you want by getting a letter, or opinion, whatever you want to call it, from your town attorney. And, you know, I hope you would agree. Again, we've had good discussion about possible conditions. I do think that things have been addressed. And it's your prerogative, again, if you close the hearing and you wind up, you're not satisfied, then you'll do what you think is appropriate. Again, I do believe it should be approved with good conditions. Thanks.
So you have, as you stated before, you have no problem with us conditioning that you negotiate with the homeowner to remove that?
Well, I don't think you can condition that. I think you condition that we achieve the safe site distance triangles as per our professional's letter. You can urge, and of course, I think my client would, I just don't really think it matters that you condition that we talk to them, maybe a distinction without a difference, because we certainly will do that. But I think the more important thing is the conditions that you came up with, that we both came up with and talked about, so that's how I would respond to that.
I don't think we can condition anybody to negotiate. What we do is, we can tell somebody what they have to do, and let them figure out how to get it done.
Yeah, the end result's the same.
Well, the end result's the same, but it's important, we don't have the authority to tell people to negotiate.
I mean, those pictures are more than, if they're in the picture, I'm a no.
The Chair has also asked for the drainage of...
Stormwater.
Stormwater. Comments from the second...
Mr. Chairman, if you're not satisfied with the report that's already been done, and all the testimony and review, and the lack of any negative comments from engineering, again, respectfully, I have to say this, I've been through hundreds of hearings, and, you know, if that was a concern, you could have asked for that at any point along the way, and I just don't think it's appropriate for any project, especially 40B, to keep the hearing open for that purpose. I mean...
My request tonight was if they could get it before the end of the hearing.
I'm sorry?
My request was to the zoning administrator, if she could pull it up from the record to see if it is, if our peer...
That's, of course, I mean, you would do that, of course, in the course of deliberations. I understand, that's part of what you would review.
I was questioning it, because I didn't, you were stipulating we were allowed one piece of information if we close, and that was another piece we may need to have. And you were restricting us to one piece.
Well, I'm not trying to restrict you to anything, I'm just saying, I think it's appropriate to close, and you can determine as you wish, in reviewing the staff, not the staff, the peer review report, and all the testimony that's been given about the stormwater. So that's all I was saying.
It's 9:30. Is there a motion for the Board to continue the Board's business?
A motion to continue till 10:00.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So what he's saying is that if there is information in the file on the stormwater that would satisfy your inquiry, it's fine, we can get anything we want from the file, even during deliberations.
But we're only allowed to get information from Town Council, that's it.
With that, Town Council, but it's certainly appropriate to, after you close a hearing, to get specific information, as long as you tell them what you're doing, that we're doing. I don't know what benefit it's gonna have to continuing this. I think perhaps a closure is appropriate now. I don't know what else can come in, other than the Town Council's opinion that we haven't already heard. And we got a ton of information here to go through, from the applicant, from the Butters, from our peer review engineer, from lots of other sources. It's gonna be a really serious, lengthy meeting, just to decide yes or no, and if it's yes, what the conditions are.
Of that, I agree.
Never mind the waivers, Frank, we haven't even started.
I'd get the waivers too, yes.
Can you, Norine, make sure that you forward the two PowerPoint presentations tonight to Counsel, so that his record is complete?
Thank you. Thank you.
Terms of closing?
I agree, we should probably close.
Right, second.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion. Motion to close.
Frank, is that's a second?
Yes.
Okay. Discussion. Anybody who's absolutely opposed to closing the hearing?
I want more information still. I want to know about the mailboxes, I want to know more stuff, so...
But can we condition that, so that if the conditions not met, then it's...
I guess we can.
The ones that are in question are, than the road layout, so I really don't, you know, they gotta go where they go to, I guess would be...
Yeah, if the site plan's not met, I think everybody is in the same position. It's a safety issue, you can't move forward. So that's a huge condition, right?
I'm in favor of closing. Motion has been made and seconded to close this hearing. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Right here.
For, in favor, want to oppose, the hearing is closed, no further testimony will be taken. Timeline, Norine, procedurally now. We have a 40-day window, and we have a robust schedule, and it's coming up on the holidays.
I would recommend that the Board hold the hearing on the 26th of October, strictly to deal with this case. Get the decision, get the facts, go through the findings, we'll put together some draft findings and conditions for you.
Waivers?
Waivers, yeah.
That's not a normal meeting night, correct?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone who is, of the five voting members, who is not available that night?
I can make it.
The 26th.
I am available.
I'm in.
Available.
Should be available.
Scott's checking his very full calendar.
I'm available.
Oh, it's still a Thursday, though, right?
Yes.
Should be available.
Okay.
So your suggestion's the 26th?
Yes, and I guess the other thing I would recommend to the Board is if a single individual might be interested in coming into the office to help work on some draft findings and conditions, so that we have something...
Material to review.
...thoroughly hashed out for the Board to consider on the 26th.
Maybe we could all come in and...
Yeah, we all get to, at least, pick at it and throw our seven cents worth in.
That just invites open the problems.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's problematic.
Unless it's scheduled. An individual?
Well, I guess what I would suggest is to designate one person, and that what we would do is then send out a draft to everyone. And then you can mark it up however you'd like, and on the 26th, we would go through and put those changes in.
I would volunteer.
Thank you, Frank.
I would.
Didn't even have to nominate him.
But all right, thank you, Frank.
All right, so the motion to have a meeting on Thursday, the 26th, at the normal time? 6:30 or 6:00?
Whatever you think.
Just gonna be this issue, right?
Correct.
So why not regular time?
Okay.
6:30. And do we need to add that we're going to have a draft, a draft outline of waivers and conditions, or we don't need to do that?
Well, that will be formally introduced that night.
Right. So we will have a draft, fully prepared, for everybody to look at prior to that night. So that you can...
Well, we'll be able to look at it when the office individually corrects. Today and primed, so to speak.
Yeah, gotta give us a little bit of time to get it together.
Yeah.
Send out an email.
So I guess that's the motion to...
Motion by, a speech seconded by Suzanne. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, vote. 10/26 will be the next date on this application. That concludes our continuations on tonight's agenda.
That's yours.
There's another one. Did you give us two? Oh, I thought, I got one, I thought it was... I just stamped it. I just stamped it to it.
About your daughters.
We have one just like this on file? I didn't know, sorry. I just stamped it, I'm sorry. I thought you were submitting, I'm sorry.
Andre just said identical. We are still open and in session. Great to see you.
All right, let's move along. Minutes. Whoops, sorry.
Give you the gavel.
I'm sorry, I mean to bang that hammer three times.
We understand this is an emotional issue for a Butters, but this is a public area.
That's good for you, Jen.
Right, just three.
We have open meeting, we have the minutes of both August 24th, September 7th, and September 14th. We'll be voting on all three. Are there any, has everyone had opportunity to review them? Any corrections, additions, or amendments that need to be made?
I didn't even really read them.
You want them reviewed?
We have Ashley.
Has anybody found any mistakes yet?
If you, I'm happy to table.
I read them, but I didn't like look for commas and things, I read them.
If anyone needs extra time, and we all get busy, just let me know, we can table.
I think we're fine.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of August 24th, September 7th, and September 14th as published. Is there a second?
Second.
Not gonna, Suzanne, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, they're voted. Number two, board discussion. Seeing none.
We're still meeting on the 28th, is that correct?
The...
Sorry? We're still meeting on the Saturday morning, the 28th.
We'll be on the Saturday, the 28th.
October 26th is the one for this.
Yes.
Two days later, we'll be having our board...
Have our party.
Yeah. I don't wanna call it a retreat, our board meeting.
I got the cough.
Richard, hope you can join us for breakfast. That kind of segues in with updates. I would just say, if anyone has specific issues they'd like to address at the Saturday meeting, forward them to Norine.
I do definitely cite.
Future agenda items, well, we've certainly created one on the 26th. Terms of the next 40B, I'll defer to Norine about potential, if, what could happen if that gets filed, where we're going to be.
Not much to say at this point in time.
Okay.
Everything is dependent on everything else, so...
That's kind of broad.
I'll leave it this way, we could have a very busy holiday season.
That's for sure.
So...
Shop early.
Any additional future agenda items?
None.
Thank everyone for a long and emotionally charged meeting.
Thank you.
Our next meeting will be held October 19th, 2023, 6:30 here in the Selectmen's Meeting Room. Wish everyone a good night. We're adjourned.